Good evening. Welcome to the Board Meeting. This is July 17th Board Meeting. The Board of Education has been in closed session since 6 o'clock. We are reconvening now at 7:30 for open session. We have all seven Board members present, and we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is recognition of boys track and field state Charlie Kern. Yeah, come on up.
Oh, you've got to go over there. This just became more embarrassing. Just what every teenager wants. On behalf of the coaches of the track team on the boys' side, we are very honored to work with all of the athletes here in District 205. And every now and then, we get some very special athletically talented athletes who combine that with a great deal of work and find themselves near the top of a hierarchy. And the hierarchy in the state of Illinois is the state championship. And one of the most difficult things to do at the state championship is to run your best. And that's the ultimate goal. And as is in some publication that a recognition I received, Charlie earlier in the year had run 800 meters in 1 minute 52.56 seconds. And at that time, it was the fastest time in the state. And so there's a great deal of pressure on a young man who had more than his share of health issues dating back to last September. And for him to get to that place where he is the fastest at that point in time was miraculous. We think that people have these meteoric rises, and we only see an event, but we never see the backstory. And his backstory is pretty dark and rough. So for him to do that was absolutely amazing and astonishing, and we were all gushing. And I didn't cheer, really. I just stood there and watched it. And then we had one more opportunity at the state championship to just sit and watch again, because at the state championship, they don't let you on the infield. And I sat there and I watched. And I watched my athlete, as well as my son, do almost the impossible to run your best on the day. He ran 1 minute 52.64, so he was eight hundredths of a second slower than his PR. And he was beaten by a young man on that day who went to the lead and ran as hard as he could the first 600 meters of that 800, and it was enough to get out in front. And Charlie missed winning the state championship by seven tenths of a second. He is moving on now to the University of Missouri, will continue to compete, and will continue to do amazing things because of all of the people in District 205 that have helped him to become the young man that he is, from the kindergarten through high school teachers, from the people who helped to maintain the fields, to the people who helped schedule buses, who drove the buses. We are incredibly indebted to this school district and have just one big giant thank you to say on behalf of myself, as well as my wife. And we have her to thank as well, because she is his biggest fan of all. So on behalf of our family and the coaching staff, thank you very much to the Board of Education for providing amazing things for the kids in this community.
Hold on, hold on. Who's got it?
It's out of here.
Keep going. These are...
I try to keep up with track. Track is a personal favorite. And I've seen some of the trials that you've gone through and mastered. So it's definitely an honor. It's even, I'm sure, more of a challenge and a privilege to have your dad as a coach, but I'm sure that is an honor. And it's also, I'm sure, you had to definitely prove that you were the best. And times don't lie. Times don't lie. So let me just make this proclamation. I think your dad has said it all about all the work that you and your family have done to get you this far, all the people who are there supporting you. And this is just a reminder. Whereas the York Community High School Boys Cross Country Team has a longstanding history of excellence, and this year is no exception. And whereas York senior Charlie Kern Jr. finished first in the 800-meter race at the '86 DePage County Boys Track and Field Championship at Naperville Central on May 4, 2008. And during the 3200-meter relay, Kern finished more than four seconds ahead of his competitors and ultimately set a DePage County meet record of 1 minute 52 seconds .56, the fastest in the state. And whereas, in the May 5, 2018 Daily Herald, Charlie Kern Jr. stated, "I'm honestly just so excited. I'm so happy with how today went. It's been a really, really rough road recovering from fall." And whereas Charlie Kern Jr. was awarded All-State Honors at the DePage County Championship and was awarded a full ride scholarship to the University of Missouri for cross-country and track. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, Charlie's family, the coaching staff, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to Charlie Kern Jr., Coach Charlie Kern Senior, Assistant Coaches Jim Hedman, Matt Memlick, Michael Murphy, Keith Petronick, Petronick, Ben Sharco, Reed Sundberg, and Matt Talbot. Thank you very much, Charlie.
Next on our agenda is public comments. As a reminder, the Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of all of other public agencies. There is a timer that will beep quietly when your three minutes is up, and we ask that you finish up at that time. And as a reminder, the Board does not respond at this time. So Michelle Reedy.
It was awesome. Both Dad and Son. Good evening. My name is Michelle Reedy. I'm a parent of four D-205 students in two different schools. My husband and I are also D-205 alumni. I'm here tonight to talk about two separate but equally important D-205 issues, the master facility plan and equity, or more recently referred to as parity. The marketing of the MFP is misleading to many. Over and over, we hear that the MFP is being driven by the need to offer all-day kindergarten. But truly, if ADK was as pressing an issue as we've been led to believe it is, it would be set to run as a pilot program next year in schools like Field, Jefferson, and Jackson, all of which presently have the space to run a pilot ADK program simultaneously with their established half-day program. D-205 is working to be a leader in future-focused learning by successfully piloting programs like dual-language at Fisher, standards-based report cards at Hawthorne and Field, and this upcoming year, looping classes from grade to grade at Jackson, all of which has been accomplished using staggered starts throughout the elementary schools. Piloting ADK would be an excellent way to measure real-time interest in the program, not simply paying tens of thousands of dollars for yet another phone survey in which a small number of participants are asked about their feelings regarding a far-off program that may or may not be implemented with a price tag that has yet to be settled on. The MFP needs to create safe and secure entries at our buildings, needs to rebuild Lincoln before it falls down, and needs to fix Field before its library floats away. The MFP does not need to commit to boundary changes based on enrollment estimations that become less and less accurate as each year passes, boundary changes that are decided based on which school wraps the most ribbons around trees, or creates the best written petition to convince the Board that their kids shouldn't have to switch schools. Can the boundary changes implement ADK as a pilot program, stop needlessly spending money trying to best market the referendum, and instead create an airtight referendum that parents won't want to say no to, and community members can easily be convinced to vote yes on? And don't put it on a November ballot when voter turnout is at its highest, and you're more likely to get more no votes. Before I wrap up, I'd like to publicly express the embarrassment I felt as a D-205 community member when I learned that Conrad Fisher had to accept thousands of dollars in donations from an outside nonprofit organization. Are we not a community district? Can we not solve the PTA funding equity issue? When I reached out nine months ago to the Board, the D-205 Foundation, the Jackson PTA, and the PTA Council all feigned interest in the problem and then passed the buck. Now is the time to create an equitable system in which funds raised by elementary PTAs are distributed fairly amongst the eight elementary schools. This lands squarely on your shoulders. Until the Board is able to rectify this embarrassing inequity, every time a fundraising request is sent home to me, Eden Earns, coupon books, fun runs, book fairs, read-a-thons, Fannie Mae candy sales, student council fundraisers, my children and I will send our money not to our neighborhood school, but rather to Conrad Fisher, and will encourage like-minded families to do the same. I know this won't solve the issue of inequity, but Reedies believe that when you know better, you do better, and we simply can't allow D-205 students at Conrad Fisher to receive less than their fair share because our school board refuses to do better. Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda is reports and presentations. We have acceleration time program analysis.
We're going to, in LNT call and audible, and reverse the order of the two presentations. We're going to do B first and then A. Thank you, sir. Being flexible, after all, I believe is a virtue. What we're going to do is start off by talking about our student achievement objectives from this year. We thought since acceleration was one of our programs, we'd start with the bigger-picture view and then drill down to acceleration in the second report. So our presentation today is going to recap the progress on our objectives from this past school year, and then we're going to present the learning and teaching priorities for the school year to come. Normally, this presentation would be broken up into two pieces, the first one to take place in June, and then the second one in July, but we've had a lot of things on the docket, and so we're doing them combined today. Our Learning and Teaching Committee did meet, though, just one month ago, rather, on June 6, and then there was a Learning and Teaching Committee report at the last Board meeting. Our two objectives for this year were balanced assessment and student engagement, and our priorities for next year, as you'll see, we're going to build upon the two from this year. We're going to start by talking a little bit about balanced assessment. Each grade level and subject has learning outcomes for its students, and assessment is the key to understanding if those learning outcomes have been achieved. It's about feedback for the student, for the teacher, and for the grade level or course team. The foundation of our PLC work also comes from student performance data. In order to maximize student achievement, we need to be able to look at trends and data to inform decision-making. Our action steps in terms of assessment were multiple. First, our goal was to refine and develop common formative and summative assessments, whether that's in course teams, or whether that's across buildings at particular grade levels, depending on the age of the student, to increase the use of common formative assessments for spot checks, to increase teachers' use of data in their decision-making and PLCs, to implement acceleration in both grades 1 through 5 and 6 through 8. Those meetings are slightly different. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then also to pilot our standards-based reporting system in two of our buildings, using those lessons learned at both Field and Hawthorne to implement across the district this fall. Steps 1 and 2, we're going to kind of lump together a little bit. In terms of common formative and summative assessments, our Eureka math rollout this year in grades K through 8 provide a tremendous amount of common assessments, which have been refined throughout the school year. Dave Beatty has been meeting with course-level teams, working on refining assessments, tweaking them a little bit, customizing Eureka program for what we need here in Elmhurst. We've implemented common form of ELA assessments. Those were piloted in our two SBR schools. So we have assessments, formative and summative assessments, that measure the standards that are being reported on the standards-based report card. Those assessments will then be used this year across the other six buildings. Social Science is working on their CDT process across the district. It is truly a K through 5, or 1 through 5, I'm sorry, K through 12 process, with course teams meeting at the different grade levels, and then at York High School, working combined with ELA to create an interdisciplinary human geography and English course, which will launch in the fall of 2019. And social, sorry, Science CDT has also continued its work. It's been working in grades 6 through 12, and the goal this year is to implement one unit in each course, 6 through 12, which is based on the Next Generation Science Standards. The assessments will be more inquiry-based, require students to do a little bit more de-processing of information. We'll be talking in more detail about these different dimensions as we get a little further on. The second step, really, the use of data, comes with that last bullet point. Mary Ann Limke's done a great job, and she's going to present a little bit later in the meeting for approval, the acquisition of a new data system to replace our two existing systems, which will allow teachers greater access to data at their fingertips, so PLCs can see more comparison data of their students' performance. Hand it off now to Nikki Timmer, our Director of Instruction.
Director of Instruction.
I'm just sorry.
Okay.
Director of Literacy.
Good evening. Our action step three was to personalize instruction for our students, and we hit at that in two different areas. One, through our acceleration, we implemented a 30-minute acceleration block for every student in every building, and the primary focus was on reading this year for all buildings except for Emerson, which they did both math and reading. The acceleration time provides us with an opportunity to give every student what they need, whether that's additional instruction at the higher end, or if they're not meeting the standards, additional instruction really basically wherever each student is. We also are continuing to work with our PLCs to ensure that our teachers are looking at data and that our teachers are talking about, again, what students need and if they're meeting the goals that they have for them or not, and if they're not, what is it that they're going to do differently and strategize and provide different ideas of what they actually are doing to give their colleagues better ideas or different ideas. And then also through the use of the workshop model, again, the emphasis was on reading this year. We started the workshop model last year and continued our work with the workshop model during reading this year. I think we've talked about it, but just really quickly, it's a 90-minute block of reading time where students, again, get what they need, whether that's guided reading or conferring during their reading time. And what's exciting about it as well is that students who need Tier 2 instruction don't have to be pulled out. We can push our ELL, Reading Specialists, Special Ed Teachers, in during that time to allow students to stay in the classroom, which I think is really exciting. Mary Ann Limke is going to touch on action step four very thoroughly. I read her report. It's amazing. But that is coming after this presentation, so I'll let her talk about that. Our action step number five was our standards-based reporting. And I had the pleasure and the opportunity of working very directly with Dr. Henderson, who couldn't be here this evening, to talk a little bit about that and to actually work through the two pilot schools. As Dr. Cohen explained earlier, we started with Hawthorne and Field this year with identifying the difference between a priority standard and a supporting standard. We allowed the, or yes, the Field and the Hawthorne teachers, we provided them with an extensive amount of research and training by Marzano, and then they worked together to hash out, if you will, what our priority standards were going to be. And then from there, they had to create proficiency scales. And just really quickly, for those of you who aren't aware, proficiency scales, we've decided to go with 4, 3, 2, 1. 3 is meeting the standard. So we had to talk, and really, as Marzano's consultants would say, wrestle with, what is a 3? If a student is meeting a standard, what does that really mean? Those were some really critical and some really hard conversations for our Hawthorne and Field teachers, and I have to give a ton of credit to our leaders, Tim and Heidi, Christina Pedraza, our coaches, Effie Nassas, and Katie Murphy, because they really, really did a lot of this work, the grunt work, if you will. The teachers, they spent, while we provided them with release time, they spent an exorbitant number of hours talking about the standards. What are our priority standards? How are we going to create proficiency scales? And this was work that many of them, if almost all of them, had never done before. So that's what we did this year. We also created a parent guide in order to inform parents. And as the principal at Hawthorne, last year, I had a meeting, and so did Field, we had meetings with our parents to let them know what was coming this year. And we're doing something very similar for next year with our six schools that are going to be implementing next year. We started in the spring with parent meetings for them. We've provided professional learning for our principals around what the priority standards are and what the proficiency scales look like. And we've also fine-tuned the proficiency scales and the priority standards for this coming school year.
So our second objective in learning and teaching this year was to increase student engagement in all of our classrooms. Our first step was implementing year three of our mobile learning initiative using Chromebooks in our earlier grades, grades 3 through 12, working on creating more engaging classrooms, and then also doing particular curriculum work, which would help lead to student engagement. In terms of our mobile learning initiative, we did have Chromebooks extended all the way down through third grade. We also conducted a pilot, which you've heard about. We did that report in April of devices in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and determined what devices we were going to use at those grade levels. Because of students, our primary students' intuitive nature when it comes to apps and the simplicity of a tablet device, the iPad was chosen at kindergarten and first grade with the touchscreen Chromebook being integrated in a second grade as students move up. And also, we've really tried to step up our professional development in terms of technology. It's not just enough to give the student the device, actually what the student does with it. How are we going to use the technology to accelerate learning? We had a number of opportunities to do that this year. We had our March Institute Day, where teachers had the ability to select from a menu of courses that would be, you know, that would be something that they had interest in, three different sessions. We had sessions of everything from Wii Video to the suite of Google applications. Jen Lieben, who is one of our teachers at Sandberg, actually spent her summer vacation becoming a Google-certified educator in California, so we're looking forward to having another Google-certified educator in our ranks. We sent a number of our librarians, well, all of our librarians and a number of our instructional coaches and leaders to the ISTI Conference in Chicago, that is the International Society for Technology and Education, just so it happened to be in our backyard, so it was very convenient to send a number of individuals where they had the opportunity to see not only the latest products and services that are out there, but also the poster papers and sessions from teachers and administrators from across the country and around the world, how they're using technology to enhance their classrooms. So really now, you know, kind of stepping up our game and continuing to refine and improve the way we use technology to accelerate learning was one of our keys to student engagement, and will continue to be as we move forward.
All right. So for our action step two, building capacity around the Danielson model, student engagement, we really focused on instructional rounds again this year. Last year, we really had to build understanding for teachers as to why we were, you know, conducting instructional rounds and what instructional rounds were and what they weren't. We, as you know, worked with the union to get their support, and I just think it took a little time to get there, but this year, we did some fine-tuning, and we partnered our school, this was Dr. Henderson's idea, that I think, I'll give her credit. We partnered our schools with feeder schools, so the elementary schools that feed to the middle school and the middle schools that feed to the high schools, they were partnered together. So it was really great. For example, I was partnered with Jackie DiCipio. She's the principal at Bryan, and then she came down to all the elementary schools, I think there's three that feed to her, two or three, and it was really fun for her to be able to see, wow, these little kindergartners are going to be my sixth graders one day. So that was kind of fun. And then also, we really made sure that we kept our focus on rigor this year. It was a great learning opportunity for us. Last year, we focused on rigor, and then we jumped to learning targets and then back to rigor. And I felt, and actually, this was a personal thing for me last year, and I voiced my opinions to Dr. Henderson, that I really felt like we needed to keep the needle in the same place, right? If we're talking about a target for, if we want the teachers to tell the students what we expect from them, then we need to make sure we don't move that target on the teachers either. So we made sure every time that we did instructional rounds, all three times this year, that we were focusing on the same rubric. I provided the rubric in your packet. It's the rigor and relevance rubric. And then in addition to that, to try to narrow the focus a little bit and not have it be so large and daunting for the teachers, they got to pick, they worked through their building leadership teams to pick one priority of the three on the rubric. Most schools picked high-level questionings, not all, but most. So that's what we did for instructional rounds. And then for the rigor and relevance, continuing to build learning and understanding of what that looks like, sounds like, and feels like in a classroom. And then also for myself, learning and teaching, principals, all of us, all of the leaders, it's really helping the teachers make those connections, because I think they think of Danielson and rigor and relevance and instructional rounds, and they're all these separate things that we do, but why do we do that? And, you know, what does that mean for us? So helping them make those connections that if you are engaging your students in learning, you are providing rigorous opportunities and making their learning relevant to them.
Thank you. In quick summary of the curricular work that took place this year, Dr. Cohen spoke briefly about Dave Beatty, Director of STEM's work with 6th through 12th grade teams of teachers leading professional learning in the NGSS, or Next Generation Science Standards, as well as developing one unit of study that'll be implemented this year. I've been working with social studies teams, groups of teachers, on the civic, college career and civic life standards, which are national, is a national framework. There are also new Illinois social studies standards that were adopted in 2016. We've been looking closely at that and spent a lot of time learning about what the pedagogical shifts require and launched curriculum writing this summer. Likewise, Arianna Leonard, Director of Language Acquisition, has been working on developing the kindergarten dual-language program, as well as curriculum this summer, to be implemented in the fall. So in summary, many of these standards, whether it's Common Core, NGSS, C3, they all require that students be able to transfer skills, and it's no longer just content And it's no longer just content knowledge, but inquiry or looking at phenomenon and being able to interpret and then be able to devise opinions or find evidence in novel settings.
So to wrap up our report from this year, we felt that we've accomplished the majority of what we set out to do this year, with the exception of formative and summative assessments that are still hanging out there. And that's going to be a process which is going to take some time. You know, with the implementation of Eureka this year, we've made a significant amount of math, for example, significant amount of progress in terms of summative and formative assessments. We also had Fontis Penel in terms of summative assessments, where we're kind of getting on the same page. CDT work takes a little bit longer. You know, that's, that's going to be a process that social science is going to continue going through next year and science is going to take a few years. So we're going to continue to plug away at that. The recommendation, again, for the data warehouse is going to be coming up a little bit later in the meeting. Program views will be starting for dual language as, when that program launches, as well as special education. In fact, there was a meeting tonight. Student achievement objectives are going to change their title from this year, next year, in terms to reflect learning and teaching priorities. We have a lot of things going on, learning and teaching, but the priorities will be the ones, the things that we report out to the, obviously, you'll answer any questions you have, but we're going to keep our focus on our priorities. And the idea that also we're going to try and look at more of a short-cycle improvement system. So the idea being that if we're trying, let's say, for example, improve math intervention, we may try three things. And one, and after a few weeks, we're going to look at and say, how is it working? One and three may be working, two isn't working for us, so we try two A. Another few weeks later, we look at them again. Three's still working, but one is kind of plateaued. We've gotten as far as we can with one. So now we're going to move on to one A and two, Mary may not be working, we might continue with two A, move on to two B. But the idea that we're going to keep evaluating it on a more short-cycle sort of approach, continue to look at, you know, progress monitoring our data. That's where the common formative and summative assessments are key. So let's talk a little bit about 2018 and '19. We'll invite up Mary Ann to talk a little bit about that.
So I'm just the framer here, although that makes me sound like a George Washington or something. So in terms of thinking about our priorities for this year, for the learning and teaching team, we sort of, thinking about last year's work and then coming into this year, we wanted to take a little bit of a step back and really try to focus. And so the way that we framed this conversation was in our administrative retreat that we held in May, we kind of just went back to the beginning and we said, okay, what are the outcomes that we know we want to be achieving with students? And that's kind of starts on the right-hand side of this, of this slide here. And so knowing what we want to achieve with students, what does that mean instruction has to look like in the classroom? So let's be really clear and really specific about what we mean when, when we say, you know, this is what we want instruction to look like. And then if we know that we want instruction to look like this, what does that mean we have to have happening in schools in order to make that instruction possible? So we just kind of stepped back and back and back. And that took us to the district level of, okay, if we know we want instruction to look, we want these student outcomes, we want instruction to look like this, we want these things to be happening in schools to enable instruction to look like that, what do we need to be doing at the district level that can enable schools to be doing what they need to do to in turn enable instruction and the kind of student outcomes that we want to, that we want to achieve? And so we took that approach in conversation with the principals and the other administrators in the district to really try to hone in on what are the key things that we really need to be focusing on at the district level that we can manage to make sure that we are supporting schools and in turn supporting teachers and students.
So our three learning and teaching priorities this year, the first is going to be, well, I see they're all ranked number one. I'm not sure, a little lost in translation as we went from Google to PowerPoint. But the first thing we have to do is articulate our district vision, instructional vision to our leaders and also to our, to our staff, and the key strategies we're going to use to get there. We're talking a little bit more about curriculum assessment, development work this year, and then our instructional strategies, which are the key to getting that student growth. The first thing, again, is talk about the vision and the strategies. And I want to give you guys a little mental exercise for a minute. Our students are starting kindergarten this year. Assuming a retirement age of 67, which is what a teacher starting today would retire at, will retire in the year 2070. Think about that for a minute. I want you to think about what the job landscape is going to be in 2070, where the careers are going to be, what the technology is going to be, what devices they'll be using, how they're getting to and from work, whether or not they're even leaving for work. And you think about, you know, going backwards in time, 62 years, back to 1956. If you think about the changes that happened between 1956 and today in terms of the work environment, now quadrupling. And that's what's going to happen the next 62 years. So what are we going to teach kids today that's going to be useful for them in the 2060s as they're winding down towards retirement? What are the skills that we can teach them that are going to help them? On the left-hand side, you'll see Michael Fulon's definition of what he considers to be the six Cs, those skills which all students should have in order to be ready for life beyond school. Collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, citizenship, character, and communication. So we talk about why we're trying to do things a little bit differently. The reason why is because our students are going to be entering a very different world than we entered when we got out of school. The what? What is it that we want to give them to be prepared are those six Cs on the left? And how are we going to do that? The how is on the right side. That's the rigor relevance framework. That's what we've been working with for a number of years and our staff is becoming more and more versed in. On the vertical axis, of course, is the different levels of knowledge. Bloom's taxonomy has existed for years. And across on the, on the x-axis, you have the interdisciplinary nature of the work. And that's already in progress. You know, we have entire courses that are being integrated at York High School, for example, you know, English and Social Science, which I brought up earlier. So how we get to the six Cs is through rigor relevance. And that's going to be important as we move forward, drawing those connections.
So Mary Ann Limke spoke briefly about the administrative retreat that took place in May. And based on some of the feedback solicited in that meeting, the learning and teaching team devised a professional learning plan for our leaders in the district. This summer, we're embarking on a book study of Michael Fulon's Deep Learning, or Deeper Learning. And we're utilizing the Google Classroom so that principals and other district leaders can experience what it's like to be on the student end or the receiving end of that platform. We found the communication tool to be great because you can access it anywhere, at any time. And to be able to get a head start on some of the, the reading and the research so that we could save a lot of time for administrative meetings during the year for discussion. That was certainly some of the feedback that we received as well. In your board packet, I believe you have a copy of the professional, professional learning plan for district leaders. And it is a sort of a month-by-month overview of, of the topics that will be hit. You'll notice that each month, we'll look at each of the six Cs, and they've been prioritized based on what we think is most important and also those for which we are already able to collect some data. You may notice also that you'll see OYO, which means on your own. So we are asking principals to look at or collect student work that exemplifies what they believe would be a demonstration of one of those six Cs, and to come ready to an administrator meeting to discuss how it's been observed in a classroom and how teachers may be changing their instructional practices. So really, the effort is to systematize professional learning for our district leaders. A continuation of our curricular work will be on a number of different fronts. The first being continued learning and work on standards-based reporting for the, for all of the elementary schools, K-5. There will be professional learning opportunity for our middle school teachers and administrators as well, and working with high school or ninth through 12th grade administrators on what the, the shift means. Also, in the area of dual language, kindergarten will implement the program next fall. At the same time, simultaneously, first grade programming and curriculum will be developed in order to implement and move up with those students and implement in 1920. Science will continue the professional learning and development of units as well and roll up. And likewise, social studies will continue curriculum writing, refinement of assessments, looking at resources, and at the high school level, continuing interdisciplinary course development beyond the ninth grade as well. We'll also be looking at Unified Arts as there are also new standards in those areas and professional learning for those groups of teachers. So a lot going on.
For Priority Three, for our instructional strategies, we're going to be going into Year 2.5, if you will, to three for the workshop model in reading. And we're really looking to make sure that that's really, really tight by the end of next year with ensuring that students are receiving guided reading the appropriate number of times a week. Teachers are, students are reading at their independent reading level. They have a variety of, of resources to do that. Teachers are conferring with students. One of the strategies that we have purchased for the teachers this next year is called Pensive, and we'll be, we will be providing professional learning for all teachers on how to utilize that tool. It's a technology tool, and it's really nice. They can use any, a tablet, iPad, computer, whatever it is that they would like, and they can take notes on students and how students are doing. I'm also working with the company to, to tie our priority standards to what is on the computer, so almost using it like a formative assessment. And then you can score students on a four, three, two, or one. So it's aligned to standards-based grading. For, and then obviously, when workshop model goes well, you have your early implementers, if you will, with math. So for an example, when I was the principal at Hawthorne, our second-grade teacher was an early implementer of Eureka. We started workshop model in reading, and she came to me and said, why can't we do this in math? And I said, well, you absolutely can. So we worked with Dave Beatty to get workshop going in math for her classroom. What Dave Beatty is looking to do next year is to build that momentum and get more and more teachers using the workshop model for math as well in order to be responsive to student needs. Continuing to work on PLCs, Dr. Henderson, again, has done a really great job of hiring an outside consultant. Her name's Cindy Harrison, and she has done a phenomenal job over the last two years of training our instructional coaches. Year one, last year, she trained and worked with groups and teams from the sixth grade through 12th grade. And then she will continue her work with them this year and then start the training for K-5 next year and continue to build on that work the following year after that. And then as that work begins in K-5 and continues in 612, we can continue to have conversations with principals and teachers and teams in order to be really looking at student data and having those critical conversations about what a four is, what a three is, and so forth. And then one of the things I'm excited about is working with Deb Lee with the D-205 University Classes, really ensuring that those classes are tied to our district priorities. So for example, we're working, I'm working on creating two classes with a group of teachers, one on the workshop model at K-5, one utilizing, utilizing Pensive and other technology tools, if you will, with another teacher, but then also having that, that follow-up. So I would get a list of the teachers who are taking that class. And one of the, the ideas is that for them to be able to move up or on the ladder or for salary credit, I think that's what we call it. I would know who those teachers are, and then I would be invited into their classrooms to see the utilization of these programs in, in their classrooms and ensuring that instructional practice is actually changing based on the class that they took. And that goes for all of the directors. Dave Beatty has been doing it in math, and Deb will do it in Arianna as well for any classes that we create at the district level. So that's exciting.
So to sum up our, our learning and teaching priorities, we acknowledge, you know, being a teacher isn't easy. The educational landscape is changing, although I would argue it's changing in a very good way, but it, but it requires, it requires work and it requires us to unlearn and relearn some things differently about our work. Technology is making our world very small, and teachers and schools are no longer the sole proprietors of information. You know, we don't need to have a textbook or memorize, a textbook or necessarily a teacher to help us memorize the President of the United States. We, you know, we can find out very quickly who the 21st President of the United States was. It was Chester Allen Arthur. I Googled it. And that's the reality and the driving force behind our vision. The six Cs are the skills that our kids need to be successful. It's research-based, you know, it's, it's based on, on feedback from employers in today's work environment. And the rigor relevance framework will guide our curriculum and assessment work. As we look, seek to personalize instruction, we'll be using technology to be more responsive to student needs as we move forward. At this point in time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
So just real quick before we get to whatever questions you might have, we, we know that we presented some of these things throughout the year, but we also know that we're doing these things every day and you guys are coming to board meetings twice a month. And so we want, we wanted to try to put these things in context to make sure that people could see what we've actually done in terms of what we set out to do. And also, maybe by the end of the year, people have the opportunity to see how some of these things not only have, have gone, but the connections that, that, you know, once you look at them back in their totality, how, how some of these things relate. For example, we know that Michelle, you know, Thompson talked about how they're handling acceleration and gave some specific examples of that. But obviously, that's tied to the F and P data, that's tied to the professional learning community conversations, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, this provides some context for the work as opposed to it maybe just being like isolated reports. And Mark, one thing, so we've got Eric Schenninger coming in for the keynote in August, and we're doing some work with Learning Transformed. So that, that, that's another anchor piece that we're using to help guide some of this. But one of the things we didn't talk about, we talked about dual language next year. Could you just hit very briefly on where we're at with Project Lead the Way at the middle school? Because that's a very big, that's a very big component next year.
Absolutely. Our teachers are training right now. We have three of them down at University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, getting trained in computer science for innovators and makers. Deb Seagut is our new department chair for Project Lead the Way. We formed an entirely new department for that. But our, this, this will conclude our learning for this summer. We've had teachers going different weeks throughout the summer to get trained, either the design and modeling course or the computer science for innovators and makers. So that will, we're anticipating that launch to go smoothly. We're going to actually be meeting the second week in August to get everybody together and start, you know, putting, putting the final finishing touches on our curriculum, but also just going through and sorting all the, the new toys. So all of the, all of the equipment that's come in for the design and modeling course and for the computer science course. We'll begin looking to this fall at not only the year two courses at the middle school, but also the high school. Project Lead the Way courses for both engineering and the medical pathways. Those are very exciting. We did a couple of site visits this spring with our high school staff. We'll be making a couple more this fall and then getting ready to initiate a much larger round of training with both middle and high school teachers in the summer of '19.
I guess I have questions around how does everyone, how does everyone know what, what's going on and how they tap into it and, you know, how they even prioritize? How do I get started and then get it into my classroom, working with the students? And secondly, how do we know how, how well we're doing? What are we using metrics-wise? How are we getting feedback? How are we doing the adjustments? I guess those are the two bigger picture things that I'm thinking about.
Communication is key. Communication is absolutely key. The relationships that the coordinators have with their leaders at the different grade levels or at the high school with their department chairs is excellent. I will tell you that this year, I've had the opportunity to work with, for example, Nikki, as she works with our English department chairs at the middle school, meeting also then with the high school department chair, Kevin Podeska. And the five of them getting together and talking about literacy so we have a strong method of vertical articulation so that our middle schools and high schools are working together. There's not a, not a, a step lost in the process as students change grade levels or go from school to school. The same is true as we coordinate among, because we don't have a department chair structured at elementary schools, our grade-level teams getting together, working again to refine assessments in math, for example. And so Dave Beatty, making sure he has representatives from across the district to weigh in on those math assessments and then, you know, those people then going back to their buildings and bringing those assessments. and bringing those assessments, assessments with them and then having meetings at the different buildings. It really is, it's, you, as with anything, communication is something you have to spend time on to make sure that those priorities are going up and down. Our leaders are, the building level, our principals, they're the instructional leaders of the building. So, while curriculum is worked on and teacher teams with coordinators, they're the ones that are really truly monitoring instruction and doing that professional learning, whether that's before school meetings during PLC times. But they're the ones that are going out and working with teachers as well as our coordinators when they go out and do teacher rounds. So, it really is, it's sort of a two-pronged process from the curriculum end and also from, you know, from the instructional leader end to make sure that what we're seeing in classrooms is what we expect. But the key is communication. It's making sure all the relevant people know what, know what's going on. We're a big organization, 8,500 students, 13 schools, you know, 400-plus teachers. It's a lot. It's, it's a lot. But, you know, I can't imagine having a better group of people to work with, to be honest. I mean, it really is all about the people. And our, our directors are always, you know, out visiting buildings, visible in the schools, and that helps.
So, if I were to say I'm a teacher in a, in a classroom and, you know, all these new things are coming at me, I can go to my grade level team, I can go to my subject matter team, I can go to my principal, I can go to the coordinator, I can go to the instructional coach for support?
Department chair, depending on the, depending on the nature of the inquiry, yes.
I think the other, one of the reasons, the, one of the priority areas is around instructional vision and the key strategies is because we felt like it's really, really critical that we continue to reiterate not just what are the things that are happening, but why are we doing them and how do they fit in? And so, that's, that's really why that particular area was one that we wanted to focus on because, and that's going to be the focus of our work with principals, because they, they are the ones who are going to get those questions, you know, from classroom teachers. And so, we need to make sure that we're all really clear and consistent about what we want students to be able to do, what does that have to look like in the class, you know what I mean? So, that whole process has to be really clear. And the other piece that we did in terms of your second question around data is we actually said, "Okay, so if we want classroom learning to look like this, how will we know?" So, we actually laid out some data sources. And then if we want school, you know, level activities to look like this, how will we know? And we laid out some data sources for that. And in that handout that Deb was referring to, you'll see there are some data pieces built into there so that we're going to come back and reflect with the principals on some of those things as we're moving throughout the year in an attempt to really be more systematic about how we're kind of checking ourselves along the way.
So, that's a good connection to the second question, which is around whether you call them KPIs or, you know, a readout from your, yourself, your department of how are we doing district-wide and why? So, I like the fact that you're looking at all the connections because that's always the key, right? Everything seems to be really connected and I'm not sure it's always clear that how it's connected. Okay. That's what you were saying is the, was the focus? So...
Exactly. That that first area around district instructional vision and key strategies, that's the piece where we're trying to make sure it's very clear. This is where we're trying to go, how we're going to get there, and it's how all those pieces fit in.
Can you help make two terms that you guys use frequently a little more concrete for me so that I understand exactly what they mean? We talk about acceleration. And I think at the beginning of the presentation, you referred to it in the context of K through five, and correct me if I'm wrong, a 30-minute period. Tell me, what does that look like? Is that one-on-one instruction? How is that instruction delivered? How do we know what instruction gets delivered to that student? You get the idea.
Sure. So, it's really based on the classroom teacher. It's her students. And then within her classroom, she determines what they need. She has the opportunity to work with her, during her PLC time, with her co-teachers. And they could swap students. There is an opportunity for an ELL teacher to come in and work with the students. There's an opportunity for a reading specialist to come in. So, let me give you a concrete example of when I was in a classroom earlier this last year. It was a fourth grade classroom and the teacher was teaching a guided reading group. The reading teacher was conferring with a student. The ELL teacher was in the room working with a small group of, of students. And then the rest of the students were either reading independently, doing word work through words their way, or maybe another activity that the teacher had them doing, but it was all literacy-related, maybe writing in their writer's notebook. So, that would be an example of what the acceleration time would look like. It's really a push-in model where all students are getting whether they're, what they need, whether that's extension, I don't want to call it remediation, but, you know, a little catch-up time, an additional dose of, of their phonics work, an additional dose of their word work, an additional, you know, support from, from a teacher, whether it's ELL, special ed, classroom teacher, to hit on a skill that, that they're struggling with.
And that 30 minutes occurs every day?
Every day.
Got it.
They may take a 30-minute, you know, one acceleration period off every few weeks to recalibrate, if you will, to come together as a group to say, "Okay, these are the 96 second graders that we have. This is what they need. This is what I've been doing. What have you been doing? Here's what's coming next." But then, yeah, four days a week for sure, five days a week usually. And then I had the slides that you're referring to, so I did reference K-5 for acceleration. But then middle school also implemented acceleration this year. That just looks a little different and that's coming up very soon with Mary Ann's presentation.
And then...
But that happens every day as well.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Very helpful to make, to allow me to visualize exactly what goes on. The second, and my final question, the second term that you used is the workshop model.
Yes.
Tell me the framework for that?
Sure.
And a concrete example of what that looks like.
Sure. Yeah. It's a 90-minute block of time. Usually 20 minutes of that time is a teacher whole group lesson. So, that could be a shared reading lesson. That could be a, an interactive reading lesson. That could be watching a video and, you know, then bringing the students together and talking about whatever the skill of the day is. And then the students really have the, the last hour of that time to read independently, to have an opportunity to work with their teacher in guided reading, to confer with another specialist, whether it's the teacher, the reading specialist, ELL teacher, special ed teacher. There could be a variety of different adults in the room. So, that's that 90-block period of time. Then in addition to that, there's a one-hour block of writing time where, again, they get a mini lesson and then they have that time to write in their writer's notebooks, depending on what the focus is that day.
Thank you.
Sure.
A question to follow up on Jim. Is the acceleration period K through five for literacy only?
At Emerson, it is literacy and math. The other elementary schools were focused on literacy this year.
And then Lincoln next year is going to do literacy and math as well.
Do kids move to different classrooms or they stay in their classrooms?
They can move to different classrooms. Yeah. So, sometimes they'll be grouped based on their F&amp;P level, for example, or Fontis-Pennell level.
It looks a variety of different ways, really, honestly. I hate to keep using the same terminology, but depend, oh, it just, it depends on what students need, really. So, you may have 14 students from, let's say there's four, I'm going to use Hawthorne as an example, four second grade classrooms and 17 of those students all need extension with the skill that they're, they're working on. Let's say it's main idea. So, those 17 kids all go with this one teacher. It could be their classroom teacher. It might not be. And then these five kids need this. So, they may be in that same classroom with a different professional or out in the hallway or in another classroom. It, it just really, it depends. We got kids kind of going all over the place. But the idea is that when possible, if a student needs a tier-two intervention, that they're getting that intervention within the classroom and not being pulled to the special ed room, not being pulled to the reading room, not being pulled to an ELL room. It, it's all, all hands on deck, if you will, during that acceleration block.
So, I liken it to the hospital. If you go to the hospital and you're, you know, everybody gets thrown into a surgical floor, right? Some people just need to be monitored, they go to telemetry. Other people need to go to ICU. You're giving the people what they need. This is what personalized learning is all about. It's, you know, meeting the student where they're at and then moving them forward wherever they're at.
So, I just have a quick question. When you talk about the professional development, which I think is excellent with so many new things and different things, but how are you hearing from the teachers what kind of professional development they need? Like, you may decide that, you know, think this is what they need, but how are they so that they too can have some ownership over their learning?
After our institute day, we actually did an extensive survey of teachers to determine what, what worked for them, what didn't work for them, what would they like to see in the future. Out of our institute days, we only have so many days which are dedicated to that. I mean, our beginning of the year, end of the year, I mean, those are, those are wrapped up in sort of nuts and bolts things. We do have a district day at the beginning of the year and a building level day at the, the beginning of the year. But when we have these opportunities to get together and focus on professional learning, their feedback is critical. We seek their input in advance and then we sought their feedback afterwards.
Hey, anything else? All right. Thanks so much. All right, acceleration.
So, while he's doing that, I'll just kind of do a little bit of introduction. You asked about acceleration and you might be sorry because now I'm about to tell you a lot of information about middle school acceleration. So, just to recap, so acceleration was implemented this year at the elementary and the middle school level. And we did kind of a full program evaluation just at the, at the middle school level. So, what I'm going to talk about is just do a quick overview of what that acceleration looked like, what the evaluation plan looked like, and then tell you what we learned in terms of the kind of two big elements of acceleration and then some, some next steps and, and some lessons learned, both in terms of acceleration, but also I think in terms of our work as we think about program analysis moving forward. So, middle school acceleration really was a change in schedule. So, we built in that 30 minutes of time so that students who needed extra support in both reading and math could get that support. And then for other students, it was a time for extension and enrichment. So, they're really those two distinct components of the program. What that looked like on the kind of enrichment side was these three-week sessions in which every three weeks, student would, students would choose a new course that they were interested in taking and then that continued on throughout the year. In terms of the intervention side of things, for reading, it was initially designed as a sort of ongoing program. In other words, students were identified for intervention, that they needed some additional supports based on a set of designated criteria. And then the idea originally was that they would stay in, in that program until they met the designated exit criteria. Over time, it became clear that students really wanted to go out and have the opportunity to experience some of those enrichment courses. And so, you know, that was changed a little bit such that they could exit to an enrichment course and then come back into the intervention if they still needed support or additional students could enter at a time when we had more data and they would be identified for support. In math, it was originally designed so that the math intervention would be a six-week block, so it would sort of cover two enrichment sessions. And then the same thing, students would exit to an enrichment class and then they would re-enter if they were still in need of support and other students could enter at that time as well. The reading intervention courses were taught by reading specialists at the schools and then math intervention courses were taught by regular math teachers. Does that mean you have to click, Dave?
Do you have a clicker up there?
Yes. Uh, yes. Oh. And we're, look, we're only two slides in. So, so that's just kind of a quick overview of the, of what acceleration actually looked like. In terms of the evaluation, I mean, it, it's fairly obvious, but really the evaluation was intended to provide information to help improve implementation as we were going along through this year and then also to look at the outcomes as well. We did do an interim report in January and that kind of helped, I think, surface some issues that we wanted to talk about and make some adjustments. The, I think the impact of that is that some of the outcomes that we're going to look at are partly reflecting the fact that we made some changes along the way. And so, it's a little bit, because this is the first year we're doing this program and because we made some changes along the way, I think the extent to which we can say absolutely 100%, you know, we should have achieved the outcomes that we thought we were going to achieve is, is a little bit questionable at this stage. So, we set up the evaluation plan really by beginning with trying to set out really clearly what were the goals and the activities and the inputs that would feed, that were the acceleration program. So, what is it that we were going to do in the acceleration program? What were the activities? And then what did we expect to, to see happen? And there's an example handout, I think, in the board documents that's sort of our logic model just for the enrichment side of it, just as an example. So, the first thing we did is we sat down and we tried with the program staff and tried to lay out really clearly, okay, you know, what exactly is, are we supposed to be doing and what exactly is supposed to be happening as a result of what we're doing? Because that then helps us set up the questions that we want to ask ourselves. Did we do the things we said we were going to do? And did we get the outcomes that we said we wanted to get? So, that's just kind of how we organize the program evaluation. And once we sort of know what are the activities, that's the if part of our state, our theory of action statement and the then are our outcomes, then we can begin to design some more specific evaluation questions and identify the data sources that will help us answer those questions. So, there's also a hand, in that same handout, we lay out the very specific evaluation questions that we were going to take a look at. So, if we begin with the enrichment side of things, the theory of action for enrichment really begins with making sure that we have good courses and allowing for student choice. So, we said, "If teachers create interesting and engaging enrichment units based in part on student input and if we allow students to choose those units that they want to do and put, and place them into their courses based on their preferences, then good things will happen." So, that's kind of the first part. That's the implementation piece. So, these are the things we said we were going to do. And so, the question is, well, did we do them? In terms of the courses, did we provide interesting and engaging courses? If you ask the students, they say yes. So, the majority of students said that they had fun in their courses, they were willing to recommend those courses to their peers, which I think as a teenager is a really, that's a statement, having a teenager of my own. So, you know, from the student point of view, I think, you know, they're, they're quite positive about, about the courses in general that they took. And that's consistent over the, the course of the year. If you ask staff and parents, you get a little bit of a different perspective. So, staff were a little bit unclear sometimes about the enrichment courses and how, what purposes they were trying to achieve. Their feedback also tends to get at the implementation of the courses, so it's less about the content of the courses and more about how easy or difficult it was for them as staff to implement them. Parent feedback sort of parallels the, the staff feedback in some ways. We didn't get a lot of parent response. I think the response rate on the parent survey was something like 14%. And their feedback parallels the, the staff feedback a little bit. Again, they, they very readily admit that their students are enjoying their courses, but what they are concerned about in, in a number of cases is just the fact that they're, they lost some other things that were replaced by that acceleration time. So, just thought this might be interesting to take a look at from the end-of-the-year survey that we administered to students, some of the favorites, maybe the most interesting and engaging courses that, that students mentioned. You'll see there's, there's quite a wide variety in terms of the kinds of courses that they said were interesting to them. These are the top five. There's a really long list of a lot of courses that were offered this year. So, remember that the second part of the kind of implementation piece of enrichment was, well, if we create these great courses and then we add... well, if we create these great courses and then we allow students to choose what they want to do, that will lead to good things. And we're going to get to what those good things were in just a moment. But in terms of whether or not we were able to actually respond to student preferences, in general, the answer is yes. So schools did a really good job, I think, of placing students according to their preferences. This is an example of data from one of the enrichment rounds, so you'll see that the majority of students got their either first or second choice by a pretty wide margin. As a result of placing students by their preferences, you do see variation in the size of those courses. So, some courses are very popular and some courses are not as popular and so you do see that some courses are large and some courses are not. I'm going to skip these slides because they're sort of more about implementation in general and come back to them because I want to continue on with the enrichment kind of theory of action story. So, we said, if we create great courses and we let students pick them, then these are some of the great things that we expect will happen. One, they'll enjoy them, they'll get to meet some peers that they might not otherwise meet in their kind of regular coursework. Teachers will also get to meet some students that they might not interact with in their normal course load. And then a little bit kind of farther out, students might feel some increased sense of ownership over their learning because they're getting to choose, they'll learn about some new areas of interest for them, they'll feel more engaged and teachers will feel sort of satisfied with some of their opportunities that they have to teach some things that they're really interested in as well. So those were the outcomes that we said we wanted to achieve at the beginning of last year. There's a lot of them and some of them are fairly ambitious. So, I think one of the lessons learned is we probably want to be a little more careful about how many outcomes we say we can achieve and how many of them we say we can measure because we collected an enormous amount of data and our capacity to do that on a regular basis, because it's me, is somewhat limited. So, in terms of those outcomes, so did we achieve them? If you think about the pieces that are related to student enjoyment, of courses, learning new areas of interest and getting to know peers. In general, as we already talked about, students are quite positive about the courses. So on average, 75% of students say they're enjoying the courses, having fun in them and, you know, would recommend them to their peers. So that's sort of the vast majority of students. On average, over the year, about 69% of students said that they were learning about new areas of interest. So that those are the two questions about learning new topics and taking more courses in these areas in the future if they could. So, again, sort of the majority of students reporting positive outcomes on that. And then the piece about getting to know students, other students well because of the course or being with students that they wouldn't normally see, again, a majority of students over the course of the year report that. So it's about if you kind of average across all the points of data that we have across the year, it's about 61% of students say that they are experiencing those outcomes. In terms of the outcomes related to student engagement and sort of student ownership over their learning, we didn't ask students specifically anything about ownership over their learning. In second semester, some students actually participated in developing enrichment courses, which I think is a really nice indicator of them getting involved and having some ownership. But other than that, we don't really have any data on that. We do however have some data on student engagement. So we ran a survey at the beginning of the year and the end of the year focused specifically around engagement. And what you'll see is that on these four items, which are kind of the main ones that we devised and pulled from other surveys related to student engagement, it's a little bit over, if you kind of average these at the beginning of the year, you end up with about 55% of students who are sort of highly engaged at the beginning of the year and that number goes down by the end of the year. So I think our ability to, the ability of the enrichment program in and of itself to directly affect engagement, I think, was maybe a little bit ambitious, particularly in the first year to expect that we would see that kind of change. I also think whether or not we would expect to see, I think it's not necessarily unexpected that we would see engagement decline over the course of the year. I know that by the end of the year, I'm tired and I bet the students are tired and I know the teachers are tired. So, you know, I think there's probably, the extent to which we can say that this is explained by enrichment, I think, is probably not, not a great extent. If we think about the teacher level outcomes, there were two. So one of the outcomes was that teachers would get to know other students and that they would feel like they had opportunities to teach topics of interest. The vast majority of teachers do say that that is a good thing that's happening, that they are getting to interact with a broader range of students. Just about, over a third, I think it was 37%, if I'm remembering right, said that they had opportunities to teach topics of interest, which may be related to the fact that only some teachers were involved in developing courses, the courses that were developed and whether or not they particularly matched the teacher's interest. That's kind of the feedback that we got. Okay, so that's enrichment. The other key component of the acceleration program is the intervention piece, so the piece where we're trying to provide additional supports to students. So our kind of theory of action here is that if we appropriately identify students for intervention, and these are kind of the broad criteria that we had, they varied a little bit by reading and math. And if we provide effective targeted instruction during that intervention time, then good things will happen. And we'll talk specifically about what those good things are in just a minute. But first, I wanted to just focus on the implementation. So did we do these things that we said we were going to do that were going to lead to the outcomes that we wanted to achieve? In terms of the identification, so did we appropriately identify students? We see a little bit of what I would call over-identification of students. So students who maybe don't necessarily, on paper, look like they meet the criteria. But I think the bigger challenge, and again, this is on paper, so some of the criteria include things like classroom teacher input and classroom work. Those aren't things that I can see, that I can easily systematically look at at the district level. So it's a little bit difficult for me to assess eligibility perfectly. But just looking at the data that I have, which are essentially test scores, it looks like we have many more students who could potentially benefit from intervention than are actually were able to serve at this stage. And it could be that, that's a test score thing and I'm looking at one point of data and in the schools, you know, they're doing a more thorough job of looking at additional data. But that's kind of what I see when I look at the data. You know, trying to make some kind of estimate of, well, how many of the kids who we think, you know, might have some need, are we actually serving? I'm doing the best I can to estimate, but you know, it looks to me like it's most of the students in reading and probably a little bit over half in math. One of the things you'll notice if you look at these data, which just gives the total numbers of students who participated in intervention over the year. And remember that students are coming in and out and so this reflects just the total number, kind of the total count of students who ever participated in any length of intervention over the year. So some students participated for a short period of time, some stayed in the intervention for a really long period of time. You'll notice that one of the things that we found is that Churchill was serving a much larger number of students for the math intervention and that their students on average were lower performing. So, if you look at the identification criteria and the students who were being identified for math intervention at Churchill, they were on average sort of lower performing group of students. And so, that leads to some of the next steps and I think some of the things we want to think about moving forward. But that's what we see in terms of identification. So I think we are in general appropriately identifying many of the students who need support, but there may be some more that if we had more capacity, we could potentially serve. Now remember, the interventions are intended to be small groups, so they're limited. So they were by design intended to only include 10 students. So, because the idea being, if you have students who are falling behind, you want to keep those groups small and be able to work with them more individually. The second piece of the implementation question around intervention relates to the instruction. So we said, okay, well, if we identify the right kids and then we give them some really effective targeted instruction during that time, we'll see those good things happen. And so in terms of the instruction, there's some variability that you see within schools and across schools in the content areas. So, I don't think it's necessarily true that you should expect that the instruction would look exactly the same in every school. But there were some differences in the ways that teachers approached the content. So, for example, in reading, some teachers were focused on short texts and some on longer texts. In math, some began by using some resources that haven't identified by the intervention, you know, design team and then brought in additional resources. So, you know, I think there was some variability in terms of how things were implemented. And there were also adjustments made halfway through. So, some of these issues kind of got surfaced as we had feedback conversations with the acceleration committee and with teachers and so some adjustments were made, you know, as the program went along. So, we said, well, if we get the right kids in there and we do a great job of providing instruction for them, what do we expect to happen? Well, what we want to have happen is that the students will feel more confident about their skills and they'll feel supported and we want them to make academic progress. So that's really the whole, the key element here is that they'll make kind of shorter-term academic progress. In other words, they'll exit the intervention and our progress monitoring data will improve as we go along. For math, we were also looking at students' self-reported capacity and number cents. One of the big elements of the math intervention was to focus on students' confidence and their sense that they can do math and so we wanted to focus on that also as an outcome. In terms of reading, when we ask kids, well, do you feel more confident about your skills as a result of this course? And do you feel supported? The answer is, yes, they do. So they're very positive about the extent to which they feel like the course is helping them and that's fairly consistent over the year, although you see some kind of strange patterns happening depending on the time of year. In terms of the academic progress that students made in reading, we do see progress being made. So, almost half the students at some point exited the intervention. Many, they are making progress on the sort of standardized measures that we have of reading that are available. The challenge is that while they're making that progress, they still remain behind. And so the question is, I think, you know, how do we think about a sort of a longer-term plan for some of the students who may be in need of support? And how do we continue to really move them along as quickly as we can? On the math side, so in terms of kids' confidence and feeling supported and their own sort of self-reported capacity and improvements in their skills over time, you see similar patterns to what we saw in reading. So, yes, students do feel more confident, they do feel supported. The numbers are a little bit lower in math and that may be a reflection of the fact that kids tended to come in and out of the math intervention more than they did in the reading intervention, which as I said, was kind of originally structured as this really ongoing, continuous intervention with one teacher. So they really kind of got to know that, that teacher. In terms of the academic progress and the measures that we have, it's a little bit of a mixed picture. So we do see progress being made, it's just not consistent in all of the different measures that we had. And maybe that means we need fewer measures or maybe that means we need more measures, I don't know. We do see students exiting the intervention, so over a third of them do exit the intervention, which indicates that their teachers felt like they were making progress and that they could go back to their classrooms and be successful. So, we do see some students re-entering though. So, you know, the extent to which our data are perfect on that is something we may want to think about. And again, when they do go back to the classroom and we look at their Eureka Common Assessment data, we see some mixed patterns. So, you know, in one grade level, those students actually look like they're doing better than some of their peers who started at the same kind of academic level and in other grade levels, we don't, we don't see that. So this is my attempt to summarize a lot of information in one fell swoop. One of the advantages of being an internal evaluator as opposed to a contracted evaluator who has to be very formal and careful in their findings is I can, I think, do things like this. So it's not necessarily scientific, but it's kind of my take on, if I just think holistically about the program and, you know, where we had some strengths and maybe where some areas to look forward to next year. This is kind of my overall take on that. And I'm sure someone will want to disagree with me on any one of these, on any one of these ideas, but that's my take. So moving forward into 2018, 19, Dr. Henderson isn't here today, but I tried to capture as much as I could about some of the things that I know are happening to address some of these findings and other things that have surfaced during the course of the year. So, one of the big pieces of staff feedback was around the challenges and the logistics related to scheduling, particularly around enrichment. So offering kids choices and then like trying to schedule them according to their preferences is wonderful, but it also was enormously burdensome for staff. And so, we contracted with a developer to put together a new tool that will automate most of that scheduling. So I think that will be a benefit. It will also improve our data because we'll have a consistent way in which data are being collected across all of the schools. In terms of the courses that we're doing, a number of additional STEM courses were developed. I think this was talked about at an earlier meeting and other courses are also being developed over the summer as well. The three-week sessions have been extended to four-week sessions, so that'll build in some time for some other things around social and emotional learning. It also reduces that kind of logistical burden around scheduling all the time. And one of the pieces of feedback too was, it's a really short period of time, particularly when you're in a time period when, for example, you might have a holiday or you might have institute day or whatever. So, what is supposed to be 15 days of instruction might actually be 12. And so, the four weeks builds in some buffer to really, you know, allow for some of that. One of the kind of follow-up pieces around the math intervention, I think, was an increased focus and Nikki talked a little bit about this on guided math or really making sure that teachers have the tools that they need and the kind of structures to be able to individualize instruction for students who may be in very different places in those small groups. So that's something that's going to be happening at the middle school. The other thing is that, you know, I think, one thing we, because we're a unit district, we have the benefit of being able to look backwards. So one question is, why are students, why do we have sixth-grade students coming into a middle school and we're, you know, finding that they may be in need of support? So, for the students who belong to us, who, you know, we have served along the way, we need to start to begin to look backwards and see, you know, what's happening in the elementary schools. And so, there'll be a particular focus at rolling out some of this guided math work at Fisher next year, which feeds into Churchill because that was the place where we saw we had the larger numbers. And so we really want to begin to address some of those specific numbers that we were seeing there. And then of course, we'll be doing ongoing work, as Nikki mentioned, on reading workshops. The other thing that we're doing around math intervention is, one of the challenges we had this year was, math is big. Math has a lot of topics in it, so, you know, there's statistics and probability and there's geometry and there's number cents and there's a lot. And so, figuring out the specifics of what students need and how to get it to them in all of those areas, I think, was a challenge that the math teachers in particular were very vocal about. And so, Dave Beatty has worked really hard with a group of teachers to develop this algebra readiness map. So at the end of the day, I think, you know, his take is, what we really need is for students to walk out the door in eighth grade ready for algebra. Some students will already be taking algebra and that's fine, but we need every kid to be at least ready for algebra. And so he spent, and did I think, a really fabulous job working with teachers to map out the very specific things that those students need to be able to do, the competencies and the standards that they need to master in order to be algebra-ready by the time they leave. they leave. And so that map will begin to drive some of the work that happens in interventions and students will be able to track their own progress and things like that. The last piece is around data and monitoring. So we made some changes in terms of how we're, what data we're collecting and looking at. And so I think having a better system to collect some of that data will really help us be able to take a closer look at it moving forward. In terms of my lessons learned about doing evaluation in the district, so this is our kind of first crack at it. I think more communication and consultation is probably a really good thing and making sure that we have opportunities to look at where we are and reflect on it and, you know, make changes as needed. The outcomes piece, you know, I think in hindsight, we probably had too many outcomes for the first year of a program and we probably had too many what are really probably longer-term outcomes. And so thinking about that as we're designing future evaluations is something we'll want to be careful about. And the piece that we didn't really implement this year that our consultants at DMG, who have worked with us on a lot of different things, but also supported me in some of this work on the acceleration evaluation relates to the cost analysis piece. So thinking about how we collect that data on, you know, how much we're spending on various things and then what we're getting as a result is something that we'll want to do more with as we go forward. And that was a lot of information about acceleration. Any questions?
First, thank you very much for that very comprehensive recap on acceleration and enrichment. Very helpful. We talked about implementation and I know a couple of slides that you maybe didn't talk through, kind of talked about what some of those...
Oh, you know what, I did, do you want me to, I forgot to go back to the slides that I skipped.
Can you maybe just summarize a couple of those points? Because I guess, I think this is kind of related to my question.
Yeah. So there were kind of three pieces to implementation. There's the implementation specifically related to enrichment. There's implementation specifically related to intervention. And then we asked, we surveyed staff twice during the year, kind of about implementation broadly, and we didn't ask them to specify whether they were talking about enrichment or intervention specifically. And so in the December survey, we were really just asking them about like, what are the big areas that you see that, you know, we need to be thinking about and making adjustments? And what are the big strengths that you see? And actually, the feedback is fairly consistent over time. It didn't change a huge amount in terms of the strengths and challenges. Staff in general rated the implementation, most staff rated implementation in their schools as fair or poor. So I think that the change in the schedules, the change, you know, the having to teach courses, you know, that they hadn't necessarily been involved with developing, you know, all of those things resulted in them feeling fairly stressed about implementation.
And thank you for that summary. And so my question was, as we go through and we think about this next year, and I love that you put together some of the adjustments that were made, which, do you think that some of those concerns that were brought up from the teachers will be mitigated because it's the second year, because you made some of those adjustments? Which, do you see any of those concerns that were brought up actually going away or decreasing due to the more familiarity of the process?
I mean, I would certainly hope so. I think year two of any program, no matter what, is probably always easier than year one. And so especially around the logistics and I think kind of the expectations and how does it work, you know, I guess my take would be I would hope that would, you know, that would improve. I don't know if Dave, you or Mark, you want to add anything to that?
I think that the biggest thing about year one that was helpful to us is when we did the January mid-year report and had a chance to kind of recalibrate. And I think that we learned a lot this first year about a lot of things. And I think part of what we needed to do was figure out how to make this work. So I have no doubt that year two will be a lot better. I think that we put processes in place that are both practical, that will help teachers in certain types of ways related to logistics, which is what frustrates them, you know, sometimes. But then also, I think that we were taking a look at how we were measuring things, you know, a lot of things that we did, but we didn't do systematically in the district consistently among the three schools. I mean, we learned a lot about that because they were talking to each other so much about what this need to look like. And so there, to me, I can't say this was perfect, but we didn't expect it to be perfect. I think what we did is we learned a lot about what we need to do to really make this work for kids. So I expect next year to be better.
And one other question. This was particularly highlighted in the additional lessons learned. And I'm wondering if you can just maybe elaborate on that. It was the very first bullet. More communication and consultation, consultation ongoing in a progress monitoring key. Can you talk a little bit more about what that might look like?
Well, the reason I put that on there is because what happened this year was, you know, I had sat down with a subgroup of folks at the Acceleration Committee and district-level staff, and we had mapped out this, you know, beautiful evaluation plan. And it came time to, it was January, and we said, okay, here are the results we have. And I, you know, I went around to the school and people said, oh, I didn't know that that, you know, that that was planned. And I thought, oh, okay, well, we need to do a better job on that. So, you know, it's some of that kind of thing. And so, for example, for the special education program analysis, the first step that I've taken is a meeting with some parents just to talk about the plan. Do you understand the plan? Does the plan make sense? And, you know, to kind of start from that point of view and make sure that we're addressing the questions that a lot of the stakeholders feel are important. So that was, I think, you know, a lesson learned. And the same thing is making sure we have those opportunities to talk to the stakeholders about what we're learning and so that we can act on it rather than, you know, having it as information.
Thank you. And again, I cannot, I cannot compliment you enough on the thoroughness of this proposal. So thank you very much.
I apologize.
Yeah, I have quite a few things, but I guess I'll just get to really the whole point of, you know, so what's the data telling us, right? What's it telling us? What's it showing us? And I think what I like, what I'm hearing from you is you're asking that question and you're helping the whole organization understand how we drill down on what is it telling us? And that then informs what adjustments we need to make in order to keep our eye on the ball, which is the outcomes for students. Okay, that's kind of the theme that I'm getting, which I like to hear because it should be about the students and the outcomes that we're helping them with. So I'll start with that and then I'll come, kind of go backwards with, I like the concept that you're looking holistically and it's just let's, let's see what the data is telling us to inform us on the student outcomes. And even from the standpoint of if we have to, I'll call it reverse engineer or reverse debug, to get to where did we, where did we miss the opportunity for the student? You know, whether it was here, whether they came in from somewhere else or, you know, language, whatever it happens to be. So that seems to be the concept and you're shaking your head, so I think I like that, too. Okay. I'm just trying to throw some things out and see kind of where you're headed because then that helps, you will help lead us into how can we do this district-wide? How can we do it, you know, systematically but with the individual students in mind? Which is a difficult thing to do, but it seems like you have your arms wrapped around it. I think that's what I'm hearing about the presentation.
I hope so.
Okay. Me, too. Because that's, that's the difficulty, right? But that's what our jobs are. Okay. And it's nice to know that we're getting there. I know that that's what we, you know, some of us came on the board quite a while ago and that's what we're looking for. And I think that I'm hearing it this way. So my last question is kind of a bigger picture still again, is so, okay, this is what you're doing, right? But how, and there's a whole organization that you're working with that actually is doing it day-to-day, but you are, I don't want to say consulting, but, you know, you're leading the charge, if you will. How do you make it understandable from that standpoint but not have it be extra work for people? Do you see what I'm saying? Where it's integrated in what they do? Understand the question?
Yes, I, I mean, I guess I see two pieces to that. So one is about data collection and burden. And, you know, I think that's part of the thing that I was saying about, you know, when I went out to schools and sort of laid out the evaluation plan and some folks said, oh, you know, I didn't, I didn't really understand that. It helped them see why I was asking them to fill out surveys twice a year and why I was asking them to make their kids fill out surveys three times a year. And that was really useful because otherwise they were really angry with me that I kept emailing them that why didn't they do the survey and why didn't they do the survey? So I think, you know, some of that is kind of built into it, I guess, is the biggest piece of it to me. I think, yeah. Does that, did that answer your question?
I'd like to, I'd like to add something to that, please. Part of what you're seeing tonight is going to be a request to move to a new data warehouse. One of the major problems we had with the, have with the existing one is that we're not getting data into the hands of the users effectively. And so the teachers and the principals, it's very difficult to find anything. It's very cumbersome. It's, they don't use it, they don't know how to use it. And if they did, they probably, it probably wouldn't help them because, you know, I don't know how many times you wanted to just beat up your computer when I walked into your office because you were trying to get it straightened out until you finally figured we can't straighten this out. So that's one thing that I think is going to help the whole system be able to move these types of things forward. The second thing is, and I say this with all sincerity, they love Mary Ann because what she's been able to do is help simplify things for them. And what she's able to do is very clearly find out, you know, what their needs are. So they find her very accessible. So when she's working with them, they do find it to be very helpful to them. So it's not extra. It's actually, it's actually been something that has been welcome for them. So I would just say that to Mary Ann as a compliment because I do think that the board has been looking for us to be able to do some of these types of things more effectively. And we're starting to get, you know, closer to that. And a lot of that's because of some of the things she's been able to do to help move it along, so.
So I'll just end my comment then with what Dave's first point is, is when you present the data warehouse, can you help us understand how it is going to be better from a day-to-day intricate of standpoint from, I'm going to call it the end user, who's the teacher on behalf of the students?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, this is going to be directed to you, but it's really directed, I think, the whole district. I want to say thank you and congratulations on looking for something new and doing something different and bringing something. This is an innovation in our, in our middle schools and it really is something that I hope spreads throughout the district. And then thanks again for looking at what worked and what didn't work and looking hard at that and asking everybody, especially the students. We talk, talk, talk about student engagement and this is filled with student input, student opinions. I think we witness a migration in, or transformation over the course of their career and it's documented, it's talked about it, but they get to high school and the engagement is low. It's terrible. And so I'd like to see what the high school can use of this, what can continue on into the high school and get those kids that need engagement more than any others. And that's where we need ownership, especially in the high school. So I want to say thanks for taking chances, thanks for engaging. And yeah, it was difficult. It was a difficult year. There was a lot of change, or two years, rather, I'm sorry. And this is, so if it isn't exactly everything that you want, then make it better. This is how it works. So I want to say thank you.
It was a long and intricate presentation, so thank you. So please excuse my questions if they lack a little organization and maybe sometimes coherence. But the first thing that strikes me is that we're trading 30 minutes every day, times 177 days a year, of science and social studies for the vast majority of our kids for this enrichment period. The one thing, I get the engagement and I get that they're engaged. The one thing that was not in the report was the idea of rigor. And I have to say, I was a little shocked that the number one, you know, enrichment class is titled Board Games.
I think it's actually titled Strategy Board Games, but the kids, this is me putting together, kids reporting on what the courses were. So I think it was actually about the strategies involved in board games, if I, if I understand correctly, the courses.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, can we just make sure that rigor is, if you did one of those, what do you call those word charts? Rigor appears in big letters.
Yeah. And that I know is one of the things that particularly came out of the parent survey and was something that was one of the reasons that those additional STEM courses, for example, were developed and so on because of those concerns. And the criteria for approval of courses was revised mid-year to get at just exactly some of those kinds of...
Yeah. And we heard about that in that Learning and Teaching Committee meeting on June 6th and I was very encouraged to hear that. I have to say, while I was reading the report, just as an aside, you know, I also think it would be great if we could open up sources of content for classes. I mean, for instance, we have a teacher, I'm just pulling this out of the air, but we have a teacher at York who is just an expert and passionate about military history, military gear, things like that. I can imagine for a lot of middle school boys, the engagement chart would be off the roof, you know, or through the roof is what I mean to say, in a four-week or three-week course on that topic. So I encourage you to open up the sources of content or broaden your net, looking for sources of content for these enrichment courses. Because clearly, I mean, 90% or more than 90% of our students are in the enrichment classes, not the, not the intervention classes. Often it was mentioned that the opportunity to get to know whether students and teachers interacting with more students, is that a priority and if so, why?
It was one of the things that people felt would likely result from this program. And so that's why we wanted to look at that outcome in particular. We met in May with the principals and some district staff and, you know, we're thinking about the next year of acceleration, what that would look like. That's not one of the priority outcomes for next year.
And kind of a curiosity question, are there kids at Churchville two times higher incidence of identification for the intervention classes? How does Churchville manage to accommodate twice the number of students that Bryan or Sandberg does?
Well, I wish Gina were here to talk about that, but they struggled on the math side. They had, unlike the other... They had, unlike the other middle schools, which typically had one teacher, you know, doing one section of the math intervention, they had really all hands on deck, so really all of their math teachers were engaged in that. And, you know, I think that it was more difficult for them in some ways because of that.
Okay. And is that something we're trying to address in the future, and thinking about how to make that better?
Yes, I think partly through, you know, some additional supports and professional development about how to manage in those kinds of settings. But also, I think, the piece about looking backwards. So let's not have, you know, 100 kids walk in the door at Churchville and feel like we have to do something about that and start to.
Yeah, but for right now and the next few years, that's what we.
For right now, it is what it is. And so the Algebra Readiness Map is a way for us to, instead of just looking at the really short term, like, you know, can we improve the kids' math scores? Can we think about what's the really key thing that we need from these kids? We got to get them ready for algebra when they walk out the door and into York. And so what are the absolute priority things that we can focus on with them?
Okay. If you recall, Jim, we also added a math interventionist position at Churchville when we realized that the numbers were as extensive as they are. And I do think the long-term solution is, Dave Beatty and Arianna did go through Fisher with Jane, and kind of do a very, with a critical lens, an audit of what math was looking like at the elementary grade levels, and try to draw some inferences about what was really going on over there. So I think they've developed some practical ideas about things that they can do. But you're right, there's an immediate issue, too, and we're working on that as well.
Yeah. So, I mean, and that kind of theme, you know, in both the intervention, which your report said, you know, could definitely use some improvement, as well as the enrichment part, what are we doing to make both of these programs better for next year? I know we have a more rigorous bar for the enrichment courses that are being taught. I'm glad to see that. What else are we doing?
So there's a couple of things. Yes, the vetting process is part of it. The second part of it is, we are looking at, a lot of the schools were only doing units that they developed. And so we're doing some in-house universities, so that teachers can learn the acceleration units from across the district that have been going on at all the schools, so that what we'll be doing is gradually implementing the best units more frequently, and weeding out the ones that are not really up to the standards that we'd like to see for kids. Another thing that we're doing is elevating and increasing the use of Design STEM for acceleration units. And I think that extending the units from three weeks to four weeks is going to have a multiple impact. We didn't really get into that, but that was a decision that the teachers wanted to see. And I think that they feel that that's going to be a better way for them to actually, you know, have the units have more meaning, and to get into more depth, and that type of thing than maybe they were able to do. Those are some of the things. I don't know, Mark, do you have anything to add to that?
I know we had a number of teachers that, excuse me, that attended the ST conference, who brought back some ideas. I know one of the ideas I shared with science teachers at all three middle schools, and their building principals and APs, were a couple of resources related to engineering, tryengineering.org and teachengineering.org, which actually have pre-made lesson plans. They're easily applicable, you know, doesn't take much more than cardboard, Scotch tape, batteries, and some wire kind of stuff. So it really is just a matter of continuing to develop, cull, and cultivate our resources that we have for the acceleration program. I mean, a tremendous amount of units were built in a relatively short period of time. And as the year went on, more and more were developed. Teachers now have a little bit of a, have a, had a little bit of a breather, and they're going to come back, ready to rock and roll, and develop a few more. But it's just continuing to seek out those resources that add rigor. So I agree with you, Jim. You know, anybody has an idea, we'd love to add it, because we want to provide programs that accentuate, you know, what is, that kids want to learn about, and allow them to dive deeper.
I mean, can I make a suggestion that, you know, I was a little astonished to hear that you only got a 14% response rate from parents? Because I think you've got some middle school parents that have a lot of ideas about the enrichment period. And maybe we would benefit, because those parents also gather a lot of information by having a car full of three or four middle schoolers pulling out at the end of the day, and gather a lot of information between the middle school parking lot and home. Maybe you can form a parent advisory committee that would meet a few times during the year to get a little bit of feedback on the courses that are being offered, and what parents think would be useful. You know, I know York does that with parents and students, and I think over the years, they've found that to be a very useful sounding board. You know, I just want to throw that suggestion out there, and again, bring up, which I bring up every time, to allow kids some time to make up tests that they've missed, perhaps during this period.
And I didn't talk about that, but that actually, in second semester, was something that was fairly specifically, required is not the right word, suggested for the schools. So they all implemented in the second semester what they called a floater system. So during that enrichment period, there was a teacher available to go and cover an enrichment course, so that if a science teacher had a bunch of kids who she needed to do something with, she could go meet with those students, and the floater teacher would cover her enrichment session. So all of the schools were able to implement that in second semester.
Oh, that's great. I'm very encouraged to hear that. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great.
You mentioned about the numbers for intervention, and I guess before we started the acceleration program, I remember looking at our PRC data, and there were a certain percentage of kids that were, I guess, ones and twos. But then, when we looked at the intervention numbers here, that percentage is much lower, like, less than 10%. So I'm wondering, are we looking at those kids that, you know, are scoring lower on the PRC test, or trying to keep the interventions group smaller?
Yeah, so the data that I showed are just the kids who participated in interventions, and I do think it's possible, again, just based on the data that I can see, that there may be more students who could potentially benefit. But what the schools did was, you know, look at multiple sources of data, and really try to prioritize, because the goal was to keep those groups small.
I can add something to that, Shannon, I think that will help a little bit. We're trying organizationally to develop a common approach and understanding of what we mean by interventions, and I think that that's evolving and developing. And I think that there's a couple of aspects to it. Number one, we added minutes to math. And so there are things going on, actually, in class with specific students, where students are getting maybe additional supports that they didn't get last year, even if they're not just, you know, going to the intervention. But the other thing is, is that logistically, in year one, our principals and teachers were trying to figure out what to do. And what ended up happening is that, you know, my goal was to try to have a more fluid system, where we were serving a lot of the tier-one students who maybe needed some extra support periodically at different times throughout the year, but maybe didn't need to be in interventions as regularly. And that would be the way we could get to serving more students, which I think need it, which is similar to what you're asking. But the issue was, logistically, the principals were trying to figure out how to do that. And some of it had to do with staffing numbers and different things like that. So they know that, you know, I made it pretty clear that I think it's an emphasis that we want to focus on next year, so I think we'll be better at it. But I think when they were getting it off the ground, they were looking at some of the kids who were multiple grade levels behind, and trying to get as many of those as close to grade level as possible.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you for doing, I mean, I feel like this is a just really honest presentation. Like, it shows the good, you know, what needs improvement, and how you're going to, you know, look to do that. And I think that, you know, the only way something can grow is if you look at what isn't working and what is working, and you, you know, try to make it work. So I, you clearly have put in so much hard work, so thank you for that. And I think just the name acceleration has given this 30 minutes a very high expectation that somehow in that 30 minutes, miracles are going to happen. Hopefully, they do, in some cases. But, you know, I think also it has the potential to really be something that kids hopefully just look forward to as a piece of their day, that they can own, that they get, you know, they aren't graded, they aren't assessed, potentially, they're just learning, which is ultimately the goal for them, is we want them to want to learn, because it's not, you know, that's what we want them to be, is lifelong learners. So my question, after all that, is just how will you then, next year, evaluate? Like, you won't be doing such an in-depth analysis. So how will you somehow still be, I don't know, keeping tabs on the program, or, you know, how will you continue to be able to improvement, improve it without going as deep as you did this year?
Yeah, I think, I think some of that will be me working more with the principals. So some of that kind of ongoing monitoring work will sort of pass down to the school level with my support. So, you know, I'll be able to put together some data for them. We're not going to do 100 surveys, you know, of kids and things like that. But, you know, I think that we'll be monitoring, especially around the intervention and the data that we have around that, and we'll be looking at a couple of other things that the principals were particularly interested in keeping tabs on. So I think it will be a little bit more of focused at the school level. Yeah.
I would love to see another, I mean, not this much detailed report, but another report that tells us, okay, you know, we changed this, we did, you know, how's it going now that it's four weeks? You know, just some of those things at some point, after they've had some time to implement.
Yeah, we can certainly do something like that.
I know that you talked about the adjustments and lessons learned. I thought, and one of the answers, just one of the board members, you talked about priority outcomes. What are the priority outcomes for 2018-19?
So they didn't really change much for intervention, you know, as far as kids making academic progress and so on. On the enrichment side, the things that the principals were more interested in weren't so much around student enjoyment, and, you know, feeling happy with the classes, but around what they were seeing as far as some of those sixties that Mark talked about. So around collaboration, and making sure that, so as the courses are designed, that they have those pieces built into them, and that as they're being implemented, that teachers have some tools. For example, there's like a collaboration rubric that they can start to get into the hands of teachers, so they can start to look at some of those kinds of outcomes.
Is that where, like Jim's reference to rigor, and we've heard, you know, parent feedback, that, you know, making sure that it's rigorous, and I'm going to call it relevant, too. You know, I mean those words, but it's, you know, it's something substantive, like you said. It's the strategy behind the board games. It wasn't just board games. It's not watching a Move Me.
Exactly. I think it's the, that piece has been much more strongly built into the course approval process, so that it's at the front end of, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Next order of business is the approval of board minutes. So we have the approval of June 19th, 2018, and June 28th, 2018 minutes. Does anybody have any changes? Okay, those minutes stand as, they're approved as presented. And then, before I approve, or before we approve the next minutes, I'm going to read a statement about the approval of these minutes. So as part of our efforts to ensure compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the Board of Education is reviewing its meeting procedures, including the process for review and approval of minutes and recordings of closed sessions. Through April of this year, the Board reviewed and approved closed session minutes in closed session. After communication with the district's attorneys and the Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor, the Board determined that the Illinois Open Meetings Act permits review of closed session minutes in closed session, but requires formal approval of the minutes in open session. The Board will continue to review closed session minutes in closed session, but beginning with its meeting as of May 22nd and going forward, closed session minutes are approved in open session. Also, at the May 22nd meeting, the Board began the process of formally approving in open session the closed session minutes which had previously been approved in closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires the Board to make audio recordings of its closed session, and keep the recordings for at least 18 months. After that time, the recordings can be deleted if the minutes of the corresponding closed session have been approved in open session. Tonight, the Board will approve in open session the minutes of older closed sessions, and then authorize the deleting of the corresponding recordings, which are at least 18 months old. Finally, the Board will continue to determine every six months whether closed session minutes should be released to the public, or kept closed in whole or in part. Even though closed session minutes must be approved in open session, disclosure of the content of closed session minutes to the public is within the discretion of the Board. As part of the six-month review, the Board will determine whether to authorize the deleting of the audio recordings of closed sessions, which are at least 18 months old. So, tonight, we will need to approve the minutes from 6:13-16, 6:14-16, 6:23-16, 7:19-16, 8:03-16, 8:23-16, 9:13-16, 9:27-16, 10:11-16, 10:26-16, 11:15-16, 11:28-16, 11:29-16, 12:13-16, and 6:19-18 closed session minutes. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes? Yes?
Yes, there is one slight modification to closed session for 6:19 and closed session, yeah. Okay, I thought we had to say it.
No other change, no? Okay. So the minutes stand as presented, and approved. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through G. Does anyone want to, does anybody want to approve any items? Need a motion?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through F.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sciforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, motion passes. Next item, superintendent's agenda, the approval of the resolution authorizing and providing for the issue of refunding debt certificates. certificates.
So Elizabeth spoke to this at our last board meeting, and so the item is on the agenda for approval tonight. Chris, is there anything you would like to say by way of introduction?
We're refunding the 2008 debt certificates. This results in savings of $255,465 over the nine years of the debt certificates, resulting in an average annual savings of $28,112. This was a private placement. BMO Harris Bank was the purchaser of the debt certificates. So that, we are recommending moving forward with the BMO Harris Bank, having the lowest all-in true interest cost of 3.171% to the district. The close of the issue will be August 8th, 2018.
Need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing providing the issue of approximately $2,900,000 refunding debt certificates, Series 2018, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding debt certificates evidencing the rights to payment under an installment purchase agreement and providing for the sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof.
Can I second the motion? Jim, discussion?
I just, you know, wanna say this completes, I think, every opportunity. We've had to refund debt in the district, and we've saved taxpayers well over $15 million in total, which comes right off of property tax bills. It is not money available to the school district to be reused for other purposes. It lowers property tax bills. And I also want to say thank you to Elizabeth Hennessy, Raymond James, who has done a great job through the multi-year process of refunding our debt. She provided great analysis, great leadership, and some great execution in the market. So Elizabeth, thank you very much.
Just wanna say, 'cause I haven't been on the board as long, that, you know, a decade ago, we, this school district was not in the financial standing it is now. And it's really your diligence and oversight that has kept, gotten it on track and kept it on track. And so I would like to compliment all of you for that, 'cause there've been tough decisions along the way. So, thank you as a taxpayer, and also now as a fellow board member. So, if there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, motion passes. Next on the agenda, approval of purchase services related to a data warehouse and assessment system.
So I alluded to this earlier when Mary Ann was up there, but our current data warehouse has been frustrating our principals and teachers. There, there has been, we have not maximized our ability to use data in this district. And this is, is a, an infrastructure piece that will make that much, much more possible for our people and help catalyze virtually everything else we're trying to do with the instructional piece, PLCs, student growth and, and everything, and, you know, the, being able to develop a more sophisticated approach to assessment. So I, I know that, I can't remember which board member, but somebody asked Mary Ann to give some examples of, of why. So I would defer to you at this point.
I, I think the, I mean, the key is that, A, it will be easier to use, B, it will be accessible, 'cause right now the system isn't accessible to everyone. And the third thing is that there's, there's a, the functionality that's there allows users to interact with the system, which isn't possible in the current system. So if I'm a teacher, I can't, for example, you know, check off these 10 kids that I really wanna keep tabs on and have all their data together, whereas with this new system, I can, I can do that. So I think it'll be more user-friendly from that point of view. They will see value in it, because they can actually do things that they wanna do. I can also push data to them. So for example, some of the student surveys that we ran, we ran completely outside of every system. We're gonna be able to run those kinds of surveys within this system, and then the data will be immediately available to folks without me having to take it, analyze it, manipulate it, and send it back out to, to folks. So those are some of the reasons.
Need a motion?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the adoption of EDDIS as the district's new data warehouse and assessment system at a cost of $64,500 for 2018-2019.
Second.
Discussion?
So I, I get why this system is, is going to be so much more beneficial, and from appearance, it almost looks as if a cost savings also. My question is, anything new? There's always changes, there's unexpected actions that occur. Is there a plan in place that kind of talks about maybe redundancy, or, you know, maybe go-arounds in place as we institute this new system?
Yeah, so this, this new system will ultimately replace two systems. So for the upcoming school year, we'll be really started, sort of rolling over existing data into the system on the data warehouse side. But the, the data that's in, that is used by our current data warehouse system is ours. So it resides in its, like, on its own server, and we have access to that data at any time. So even if we put it into and, you know, let the EDDIS system be fed by that data, we still have that data should we need to access it separately. So that's kind of the redundancy there. On the assessment side, the system that we'll be replacing ultimately, we're not gonna be replacing right away, 'cause we're not ready. And so we need to make sure that we have those safeguards in place, that we're able to transfer all the assessment, the assessments themselves, plus the assessment data before we make that transition.
So Mary, I just had one question as it pertained to implementation. I mean, obviously, we have to run, it said, your proposal said that we needed to run an overlap, because the system hadn't migrated. And my question was just, when's the first year that the staff is actually gonna be able to use this? Is that not until 1920?
No. So next year, we'll have a pilot set of folks using the data warehouse side of it. We're not gonna open up the assessment side of it until 1920.
Okay, so there is value, 'cause I, my, my question was, the alternative would be, if you didn't have that many people using it this year, what is the difference between this and implementing summer, next summer, and then next fall, having it ready to go, when really is when you're gonna have it ready to go anyway?
Yeah, I mean, partly, we need people using it, because, I mean, we get to decide what data visualizations and reports we want. And so part of the value in having, even if it's a small, small number of folks using it this year, is we're gonna start to figure out exactly what are the right ways to present the data to them. People really want it, is the other thing. I've already had, so I was anticipating implementing with a fairly small group, and I've already had two principals come to me and say they really wanted to use it with their whole staff. So I, you know, I think that it, it makes more sense to roll it out, so that we learn about kind of the training needs and the right kinds of reports and visualizations to get out there, rather than waiting and trying to do it full-scale at once.
Okay, and, and so it sounds like your implementation schedule is like 18 months, no matter which way you go, if you-
Pretty much.
-in order to get through that. So, okay, I was just trying to understand, $47,000 is a lot of money, but, I mean, it's, it sounds like one way or another, you're, you're going to have that overlap.
I, I don't see a way around it. I mean, ultimately, because we end up, in two years, we end up with one system rather than two, we do save money, and it, it offsets the cost of having to-
You'll recapture that later, okay?
Exactly. So, you know, it, you don't save as much money by having to do it that way, obviously, but, you know, you still end up with some cost saving.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Karen, yes or no?
Oh, she dressed up.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, Jen. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, motion passes. Item C, approval for funding for York Manufacturing Lab equipment.
So the construction of the reconfiguration of the manufacturing space is well on its way and nearly complete, Mark. I think it might actually be complete. Is it, are we done or close to it?
I think we may have a few finishing touches, but otherwise, the 90% of the work is completed.
So this is equipment that will be used in that lab. So there are some lathes, there's CNC machinery, there, there's different types of equipment in there that, that, that will be used for the new curriculum, and that will be presented in October to the Board, when the high school presents that information to you, to get their handbook ready for next year. And so we have various partners that are helping us launch this, and the foundation has always been extremely good to us ever since I've been here, certainly, anyway. When we were trying to launch the ELA curriculum, they, they were very prominent in helping us establish our libraries at the schools, for example. And this is something that fits very nicely with their mission on innovation. And so they are very, very generously have agreed to authorize up to $80,000 to get this project off the ground. And we, we have Perkins Grant money and some other partners, through some manufacturing associations, that will continue to help us furnish that space. But this is an excellent start. And what this does is it allows us to start getting the teachers trained with our business partners and some other things like that, so that when the curriculum is ready to go the following year, everybody's ready to go full steam. So again, just much thanks to, to the foundation for, for its partnership and support.
Okay, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of up to $80,000 for the purchase of two manual lathes and two manual mills for the York High School Manufacturing Lab from District 205 Foundation. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Second. I'll second. So I just wanna say thank you to the foundation. They work tirelessly to raise funds that support the district and the mission and vision, and especially working hard to do things that reach as many kids as possible. So just a huge thank you to them for this gift. Any other discussion? Okay.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Seven i's, no nays, the motion passes. Item D, approval of donation, Conrad Fisher.
So this donation's a little bit different. There's an outside organization that tries to support schools that they identify as maybe having some needs that, it's a charitable organization, in other words, that, that, that does this work. And you can see and hear that they, they've done this type of thing for, for many other schools. I do want to try to clarify that this is, this, this donation is more about school supplies for individual students who have perhaps difficulty coming up with the fees or buying their own school supplies. So it's a little bit different kind of a donation, and I think that to suggest that it's, it's to supplement basic classroom resources and needs that all of our classrooms across the district have access to and all of our teachers have access to is, is not an appropriate way to look at this particular donation. And I just felt it was important to kind of explain the, the uniqueness of this.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Enchanted Backpack for school supplies in an amount of $10,128.18. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I second. And I also want to, I know this is an outside donation, but I wanna thank the Fisher administration, who took the initiative to identify this outside organization and completed the form, I believe, that was, I wanna make sure I thank specifically Jane for, for being proactive and looking out for the population, our student population.
Just a couple things. Thank you to the organization and all the people in it, the Enchanted Backpack organization. It's a great organization that identifies when there's additional needs and, and tries to meet them. But I did wanna respond to one of our commenters tonight, who seemed to indicate that she was embarrassed that board policy had somehow contributed to what she perceived was a disparate learning environment. When I read the motion, I stressed that we accept gifts pursuant to our Policy 880, Gifts to the District. And if I could just read a little bit of it, we've had this discussion over and over again, and we've tried to be responsive. But it says, "The school board accepts gifts from any education foundation or other entity or individual, provided the gift can be used in a manner compatible with the Board's education objectives and policies, and permits the district to work toward resource equity among its learning centers." We take that very seriously. When I started on, on the Board, 2011, we rewrote this to stress that idea of equity among the, the, the schools, the idea that you get the same education at each and every one of our buildings. Dave identified why this is different. But we've gone back at various times. We went in the finance, the policy committee over the summer and, and talked to some of the parents from Fisher, who had expressed their concerns that there was a disparate environment. We stressed, at the time, the administration agreed to demonstrate, to, to, to come back to us and show us how they are making sure that our buildings, in the essential elements and in the essential resources, are basically equitable. And so we take this seriously. We visit it every now and then. And I think for someone to say they're embarrassed about an outside agency helping one of our schools, one of our schools that has demonstrated socioeconomic need, that's unexplainable to me. I, I think the Board takes a responsibility. It's a great, great school community. Everybody should visit Fisher and be a board rep to Fisher during one year of their career, and to see an amazing place it is, with a great energy. And I'm glad that it, you know, we're doing our best to try and make sure that we are reaching the most needy members of
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. All right, superintendent's communication, all-day kindergarten financial estimates.
Little over a year ago, I provided a document to the board that talked about some long-range financial planning and different elements of program implementation that might be on the horizon. And so, what, the first part of this memo really just kind of updates that information now that we can be a little bit more precise with the all-day kindergarten study, the potential boundary adjustments, conversation that we had, and some other, you know, factors when we look at potentially implementing this. And so, I, in this communication, I outlined for you the assumptions that went into these numbers. So, you'll be able to see the various different things I took into account. And I think I did a pretty good job of capturing the things that we needed to consider. But I think that as we get closer to possibly doing this, we'll know more about, you know, what our costs are and some other variables that we would need to consider potentially. So, this isn't meant to be 100% precise, but it's meant to give people an idea. And so, I will go from there. We talked about educational benefits of all-day kindergarten in some of our presentations. And then, we talked about at the last meeting, boundary adjustments and grandfathering. And so, I recapped some of that. But to get to the actual cost piece, I took the first grade enrollment projections because those numbers are higher because those are a lot of families that come to us that choose all-day kindergarten somewhere else and then come to us in first grade. And I worked off the percentages from the all-day kindergarten study and our own survey last spring of people that were enrolling their students in kindergarten in the district. And then, we are going to resurvey our parents to get a second comparison to just try to validate the original numbers. But at that time, it was 87% of our families said that they would be interested in all-day kindergarten. And so, I took the range of the schools that charge tuition, which in the all-day kindergarten study that Steve Cordigan presented this past fall, I'm looking for the numbers here, it looks like we had between, where is it? 70, oh, there it is in one of the bullets. We had, depending on the cost that the various different districts charged, there were various percentage enrollments that corresponded with that. So, I took the range from 75% participation to 87% participation. And what I did when I went school by school with the enrollment breakdown of the 2022-23 enrollment projections, which was as far out as we had three years down the road, what I found was that when you divided out the classes per school, there really was no impact on the staffing. It broke out the same. Whatever percentage we used, whether it was 75, 83, or 87, the staff didn't change. So, what I did is I took a comparison of our current average annual teacher cost of approximately $80,000 times the number of teachers that we currently employ for kindergarten. And then, I took a look at the number of projected sections and then the difference as to how many additional FTE we would need. And that number came out to be 10.5. Then, I took an average cost, knowing that that was going to be down the year, down the road a few years. I just built in an inflationary number. I just made up a number because I, you know, I mean, I don't know what that's going to be, but I just picked the number of $85,000, multiplied that out, and then calculated what the break-even cost would be for the program. And the break-even cost for the program, with all of those assumptions, is between $2,183 or $2,532. And in my summary statement, I recommended that the board, to get a true break-even cost, should err on the high side because that's not taking into account any extra sections of art and PE and music that we would then have to add with additional sections and how we actually program the all-day kindergarten. There might be some extra miscellaneous staffing in there that isn't accounted for, but it's hard to calculate that right now when we're, have a lot of hypotheticals. So, and then, I also, in my recommendation, I talked about the fact that we probably would not want to take a look at a pilot, although we could. We could start all-day kindergarten at some of our sites now. That would create some access issues and some equity issues across the district that I think that a lot of parents would not appreciate. But if we wanted to do that, it is possible. So, I explained that. And then, I also talked about, if you went to a tiered system where you didn't kind of do the fee waiver for some families that would qualify versus just the cost to cover the cost of the program, if you wanted to do something for people that are above that fee waiver line but maybe still have, would have some financial difficulties in terms of being able to pay tuition and you tiered that amount in between zero and, say, $2,500, then you would kind of have to recalculate how much of that money would be district money or what tuition cost you might want to charge and where you want to go with numbers from that standpoint. So, that's included in this memo. And then, I also talked about the fact that we were looking at a neighborhood school concept because that was the feedback we were getting. And I do think that the all-day kindergarten center began to resonate with people when the concerns about boundary adjustments kicked in. And so, when we started to analyze the various different things that would be involved in an all-day kindergarten center, our team of architects and internal administrators and all the people that have been involved in this really don't believe it's a good idea. So, I outlined some of the reasons why. We think we'd have to move all of the students because we think that ultimately, if the program becomes as popular as we're anticipating, based on some of these assumptions, we could have some schools in some sections where we're running a half-take kindergarten section, maybe of eight kids or something like that. And, you know, that just gets to be, the cost efficiency of doing something like that, you know, becomes a problem. Also, the Edison site, you get to a situation, you're going to want kindergarten students on the first floor. And, you know, if we were to consider redistricting like 300 Edison students to a different site and then just making the current Edison School and all-day kindergarten center, you'd be displacing a lot of students. That's a significantly greater number of students than are currently being affected by boundary adjustments. And I think that that would be something that would just be, I think, the political feasibility that would not go well. So, the second alternative would be, you'd be, you'd be adding on, you'd have a lot of students, like you'd have 800 maybe students or whatever at an elementary school on that one site. And even if you were, you know, had 500 kindergarten students on that one site, we're anticipating that with the increased busing and the number of families who would not want to put a kindergarten student on a bus that would drive their kids to school, you would end up with a lot of traffic in that neighborhood where I think you'd have neighbors, you know, upset. Additionally, you'd be adding a lot of cost to the program because if you take a look at the cost of the new schools at Field and Lincoln where we're estimating 25 to $29 million projects at that point, you, in order to finance an all-day kindergarten center, would be actually more expensive than what we're currently proposing at Edison, which would either increase the cost to the taxpayer or take away from other things that we have in the current plan. Then, we have, you know, the idea of combining an early childhood center, maybe not using the Edison site. Madison is a little bit problematic because of the agreement we have with the city for stormwater storage. And so, the number of buses, the number of additional parking we would need for that many students or for that many faculty members, and then, the additional play area you would probably need for that many more students. There just are not a lot of alternative sites around the district besides Edison due to various factors, most of our sites being landlocked, et cetera. So, you know, we've tried to carefully consider this. If November's a reality at all, in some ways, we're starting from scratch at this point too, which, to me, is concerning. It may not be as concerning to other people, but it is a factor that the feasibility of being able to kind of redesign the entire concept at this point pretty much takes November off the table. And delaying the idea of November, again, this is something the board ultimately has to decide. But from an administrative point of view, based on our experiences and the information we've been providing you, moving a referendum to a board election is typically not recommended. It creates a lot of, a lot of problems. The referendum becomes the board issue in the election cycle, and it tends to convolute a lot of various different things for a lot of reasons that I'm not necessarily going to go into right now. So, that's, I think, a fairly thorough synopsis of the main points that I included in this all-day kindergarten communication.
So, main question. The purpose of the meeting on August 8th is to have this conversation, right?
The purpose of the meeting on August 8th would be to have this conversation, yes, based on some of the results from the phone poll and some other things that may need to be included in that conversation. But I was asked to provide information on costs related to the tuition. So, I did that. And then, as a part of that last conversation, there were board members that had different questions that they brought up that I also tried to address some of those in this.
Sure, I'm just setting the stage for what happens at 10 o'clock tonight, or 10, whatever the heck it is right now. All right, so this is, the purpose of this conversation here isn't necessarily to discuss which way we're going. My understanding is, is that on the 8th, we're going to talk about the approach, neighborhood versus center. We're going to talk about ways to pay for the general operating model. So, before we ask the taxpayer for $168 million and then say, "Oh, jeez, we can't actually implement." I don't want to look like a fool. And then, fully define the grandfathering, right? Is that, are those the three things that are coming out of? So, you're giving us some information here.
I'm giving you information. I'm, when you talk about the grandfathering and the boundaries, I'm trying to kind of recap what I thought I heard the board say at the last meeting.
Sure, I'm just saying the purpose of the meeting on the 8th, one of the outcomes there is going to be the board will settle on one statement around what we believe grandfathering policy should be, correct?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The clarifying question is grandfathering around what? What was discussed at June 28th? The option D?
Well, all that to be discussed.
Okay, so, sure.
I want to be clear when we talk about.
Our policy around grandfathering and the approach to grandfathering. And can we please, again?
What it applies to.
Here we are, we have another memo that says 62 students would move from Hawthorne to Edison. 62 students are not moving from Hawthorne to Edison, just in case somebody reads this, correct? We are not moving existing children out of a school into another school, correct?
We would not be doing that, no. That, and, but that also.
I get this question a lot. That's why I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt about it, but I get this question a ton. People running up to me saying, "You are moving kids. What the heck are you thinking?" I'm not ripping any kid out of any school and putting them anywhere else. And we had this conversation before. But just please, let's not talk about students that are being moved. We're not moving students. But, so, we're going to have this conversation around all-day kindergarten center versus neighborhood schools in light of what you've given us to think about. So, I appreciate that. And in light of the conversation we're having, I just had a couple questions. One was just, you use 6% for a fee waiver at York. The fee waiver for activities is 8.44%. Is there any magic to six?
I just replicated which, that number based on what was in my June memo last time, which I believe I got from the business office. And so, if it's 8.44%, that means that it's increased this year since last year.
Okay, so, I mean, as we prepare for the 8th meeting, can we just get a range? Can I get like 6%, 8%, and 10% or something, just so we don't have to be that precise? Just what is the impact?
Okay.
And then, in order for us to really assess what the operating model is, we have a cost now. We have an approximate fee that it would take to cover the cost in one scenario. One of the other scenarios is it's free for everybody. So, how do you find a million bucks? And I think that's, the board needs to understand what that is. Because I personally don't want to put a referendum on the ballot, which is very largely centered around all-day kindergarten, if we don't have an operating model that goes with it. Because if we find we can't afford it after we build all this stuff, I don't, I don't want to go there.
Well, I thought that the remaining issue from all-day kindergarten was to start to take a look at the fee question so that we could give people some idea what the board's thinking is on a potential tuition-based model and where we fall on zero or all or somewhere in between. So, if.
Right, but I need to know what that looks like at zero. So, you know, the statement that we would need to find approximately a million dollars at zero, we need to flesh that out.
Well, that, that's a little bit difficult because a board would have to, I mean, I don't think, I don't know if it's a good idea to put a potential list of program cuts out that a board hasn't, you know, discussed or would be committed to.
But the point is, it's not a real option to consider if you don't understand what the implications of it are. Otherwise, it's just punting a million bucks to some future board to figure out how to pay for, isn't it?
When this came up with the community engagement sessions, there were some mixed feelings on how to approach talking about what a do-nothing scenario is. But in that, when we did talk about that, I gave some examples of what dollar amounts translate into in terms of the number of certified staff or what athletics costs the district. And I just tried to give some general examples of how dollars translate into our operating practices. And I gave one example, for example, the, I translated the staff into how many elective offerings that translates into at York. I mean, there's a whole range of options that people consider if they're really looking at budget cuts. I mean, I don't know that we want.
But Dave, how can I vote? I'd love to see all kids in the program, right? I'd love to figure out how to do it, right? One of the things we'll talk about is, is at $2,500 with fee waivers, does that make sense? Or is there a middle, like, group of kids that are left out? And what would that cost? And where does that money come from? I mean, voting for, okay, we're going to put all-day kindergarten on the ballot, we're going to say we're not going to charge, it's going to be free to everybody, and it's going to be in the neighborhood. But I have no idea how I'm going to deliver that promise to you, and I'm going to let some other board figure it out, is unfair, I think, and not entirely intellectually honest with ourselves. And so, if we're going to have a conversation where the board has to say zero. And so, if we're going to have a conversation where the board has to say zero today, then I think we have to say what it means. Do we not? I mean, I can't pick that option and just say, "Let the other board figure it out."
So, are you suggesting that I give a recommendation on what I think the board should consider cutting if it goes to all-day kindergarten? Because there's so many different things that could happen there. You could say, "We don't want media specialists, we'll have paraprofessionals in libraries." I mean, I don't endorse that.
I don't know, Dave, but how can I tell you I'm going to vote for zero?
I can't.
And I know I've just created a million-dollar hole for some other board. And how do you, I mean, I'm open to suggestions on how I rationalize that, if you want to help me.
Chris, then, you know, clearly, one option that you're bringing up is you run two referendums, an operating and a capital referendum, if you want to vote zero.
I believe I said that last time, to my sugar in, but...
You know, that's one option that you're talking about.
Exactly. I mean, it's not a fully funded plan if you put the building on the referendum, but you don't have the operations figured out. And God forbid, something happens financially to the district, and we end up five years from now in a position where we have these classrooms that nobody's in, that the taxpayer's paying for, and we can't, oh, sorry, I can't. Or, worse yet, we decide that our model's free, and we go to cut the things to make the room in the budget to do it, and the community says no. And then, you've got to go back for referendum at that point in time to get the money to do it. I mean, I would like a fully funded plan put on the ballot. So, I don't know how to frame this conversation, but I'm just saying, I can't view zero as a realistic option if I don't know what it means to say yes.
Well, I was thinking the same thing, Chris, is right now, I have to say, it has to be, tell me what it costs, and that's what has to go out to the users of the all-day kindergarten, because otherwise, we don't have the funding. We've talked about it. We're spending fund balance to even manage the facilities, and the referendum is about facilities and capital not operating. And if we were to ask a second question, I would say it should be more than all-day kindergarten for operating, because there's other issues.
So, are we wanting a, so, this is the option that would break even, right? What you just presented. So, are we asking then for an option where it's no cost to families, and we got to figure it out in our budget? And also, maybe something tiered or something in between?
I mean, that's, I'm just talking about an intellectual exercise where you talk about options, everything from free to the user pays, right? And then, somewhere in between is the district contributes something to it. And so, if the district's contributing something to it, where's that money coming from? Is my question. Because I think, at the end of the day, I'm not so sure that we're going to end up in a spot where we say, "If you can afford it, you can have it, and if you can't, I'm sorry." I don't know, but I just get the sense of the folks on the board here that all means all, and when we need to, if we're going to ask the entire community to pay for it, we need to be able to provide it to everybody. And so, if it is something where it's a tiered fee structure, or where, you know, and again, I would say, let's not sandbag the calculation, and I'm not saying you did, but I'm just saying, in our mind, with 6%, 8%, 10%, so that we know the ramifications if it gets adopted by more. I mean, I'm just, this is the way I'm used to making financial decisions, so I'm sorry if I'm bringing it here, but it's just, I just need to know what those scenarios look like. So, pick them, you know, pick that end of the spectrum. Free, user pays, and then, what are some options for the middle, and where do we come up with our piece of the money? Because like Jim said, I mean, ultimately, if it's all-day kindergarten supported by the community that deeply as it is now, perhaps there's a relatively small amount that goes on a second ballot question to fund it.
I have a question. So, what kind of tool can we use? I mean, PMA projection with the different scenarios? I want to be clear, like, what, so, what we get back on August 8th is something that the board is anticipating. I mean, is this PM, do we use PMA projection as a tool for something like this? Or what is the tool that we're going to use?
It's, there's a million-dollar hole, how do we find it? Where do we...
Right, but what's, how do we discuss that, though? I mean...
Well, you look at your budget of $120 million, and you figure out where maybe a million bucks could come from, is the answer.
Okay, but maybe I asked Dave, I mean, do you think that's a helpful tool? We used to use the PMA projections to show different financial scenarios, and I thought it was helpful to have a, to start the discussion on different scenarios, and maybe I'm asking you, is that something that you like to use? Or I'm just trying to frame this discussion so we don't end up in this position next time.
Well, there's always something that we can do to manage our resources. The difficulty is that when boards are in a situation where they really have to reduce expenditures, typically, there'll be various different things that are presented that the board can take a look at, at what it ultimately agrees it's willing to cut back, but I think if you're not realistically looking at making cuts, putting those things in front of the community typically is something that you don't do unless you're really serious about possibly making those cuts. So, it's a tough, it's a tough spot to be in. The PMA projections, we could maybe use in some way or another, but I know that the first round of community feedback said that they were supportive of all-day kindergarten, but they didn't want that to be at the expense of other programs. And so...
But if we pick free, then that's what we did, correct?
That is what you would do.
Yeah, but, so, the issue with PMA is it's a forecast tool, so I can look two, three, four, or five years out, right? And it's based upon assumptions around CPI and property values. I don't need to know what it looks like necessarily five years from now, I just need, if I had to do it today, if we had, if we did all-day kindergarten, and we had the facility already built, and we wanted to implement it today, assuming we're running a balanced budget, what would have to give? And so, the tool is our budget.
Right.
And then, we look through the line items and figure out the types of things, or there's a second referendum question, or there's something, but I just, I can't say it should be free to everybody, that's great, and then, five years from now, say, "I just gave you an unfunded mandate." And then, I'd be a legislator in Springfield if I did that.
Well, I can put together some information on where options would be that we could find a million dollars, and then, you know, one of the options would be to go to the community and ask them for some increased funding. I know that, I was talking with the Indian Prairie superintendent this past week, and when they did this, they took the money out of their fund balance for the first year, and they just made that initial one-year commitment out of fund balance, and then, they had long-range planning decisions that came into play, but at the time, the funding formula was different than it is now. And so, when I asked Chris about the potential for additional state aid, if we have more students enrolled in kindergarten, his answer was he didn't think that we would be getting a lot of additional state aid under the new formula. And so, I think that Indian Prairie was able to offset some of that in future years, and it was only a one-year bite for them. I think for us, it would be more of a recurring, right, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a gap. I mean, I like into it, if I'm going to buy a factory to make more product, I have to go to the bank and tell them how I'm going to run it. So, they don't give me the money to build the construction of the building unless they understand what I'm going to do inside of it that's going to produce the money to pay it back. And in this case, I can't build a building if I don't have an idea of the operating plan to provide the service that I sold the building on in order to get it built. And so, we may not go that way, but it's an honest conversation, but if you're going to put a second question on a ballot, you're going to need to have this discussion, says if you don't put this on the ballot, then this is the trade-off in order to get this But that's, we can have this conversation on the 8th, given the time of day, but I'm just, I'd like the data or that information on choices, on how to really be intellectually honest in making our choices, so that we can have a robust discussion, so we don't have to do it more than once.
But, whatever we say, this is the intention. It's the board sitting here in 2021 that's going to decide what actually gets done. But what you're saying is a plausible intention should be established on the 8th.
I think so, otherwise, it's an unfunded mandate to a future board.
It's an unfunded mandate to another board, or it's what we would do in 2021.
Sure, but it's an honest assessment of what the pain could be. I mean, it's just being very honest with the community and saying, "Look, you know, if we don't find another funding source, and if we have to, in order to implement this program at zero fee," or maybe there's, I mean, I'm hopeful that there's some hybrid ground where there's some tiered structure or something, is where I guess I'm starting to come out, where it makes it a little less costly. But again, I just, I need to know how to fill that, what that gap is and how to fill it. So, I would run a scenario with a tiered structure, a scenario with free. And then, I think you provided us with a number on what it would cost if we fully funded But I would encourage you, when you're making assumptions, to maybe pick one or two and give us a range, rather than just give us a number, so we get sensitivity.
While we're on the subject of information wants for the 8th of August, there are several providers, multiple providers in Elmhurst of parents who want to turn our current half-day kindergarten into full-day kindergarten. I think it would be very useful to know what those institutions charge to do that, and if we end up charging tuition, we would have, at least be able to make some more informed guess as to what enrollment would be in our programs, and therefore, how much space to build. Now, of course, the ultimate test of that would be to run a trial, but I'll save that discussion for August 8th.
Any other information desires for August 8th while we're on that? Okay, so, we will circle back to this with the rest of that information on August 8th. Superintendent's communication, item B.
So, I was asked to just touch on some of the things from this past week when I was out of my office in Finland primarily, and so, I included some of that. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, obviously, it's getting late. I think that I shared with you my latest blog post, which is a little bit different than the memo that's in your packet, because it's more of a, I guess, compare and contrast type of thing of some of the big ideas in Finland, but a couple of them that I'll touch on. They only accept 10% to 15% of applicants into their teacher education programs, and they have those programs housed, they don't have them at all of the colleges across the country, they have them at about four or five primary research institutions, and every teacher that comes out enters the classroom with a master's degree, and they, so they really take a lot of pride in feeling that they have very high-quality teachers, and then, so, driving that system, then, is a lot of teacher autonomy, and they have, they have no standardized tests, they have a high school exit exam, and that's about it, and all of the rest of the assessments are teacher-constructed. They really focus a lot on the culturally developing independence, and so, what results out of that, and just as an example, kids at a very, like, the year that they start school after the first, you know, couple days of school, they're all walking to school or taking public transportation to school. So, they just have a, the kids are raised in a way where they're kind of, become self-directed at younger ages, and then, that translates into the classroom in terms of really focusing on personalizing education for specific students' interests, and so, they have a curriculum, but they really, they really do focus on the skills, more so than the content, and personalizing education for the students. So, students, actually, when they start a unit, the majority of their teachers will sit down and actually plan with students. Like, they plan their units with students. And so, there are a lot of interesting things about it, a lot of it's in the memo, but one of the, one of the big things is that culturally, they value education so much that all of their public policy and funding discussions are consistent with those values. And so, they really have, they believe strongly in education. And so, this whole conversation from Finland got started in 2001 when they were the top scorer on the PISA test, and that's an international test of math and reading and science. It's the only international comparison that's out there, and the United States has always been in the middle of the pack on that test, so a lot of people started paying attention to what does Finland actually do. So, I included a lot of that information, I'll leave it at that for now, but it is in your packet to look at if it interests you, and it was extremely interesting. The former Minister of Education, I met and talked with him, and some other teachers and leaders who presented and sat down and talked with us, and it was pretty fascinating. So, that's that, unless people have...
I'm sorry, I do, I know it's 10 whatever, but I do have a question about, so, you and Mary were asked to participate in this, so, bigger picture, the state and US government asked you all to do this, what was the objective intent? Great information for us, good for you to know, but kind of, what was the intent?
Well, the, I think that they identified people whose, the system was trying to support, you know, some of these ideas about globalization, innovation, and some of those kind of forward-thinking types of ideas, and so, they, it's an organization that just supports international, international learning and dialogue and interaction and diversity, and it's an education system, they provide opportunities for students to do some of the similar things that we did. So, for example, this leadership conference that I was at had students from all over the place participating in this experience, where they did this design thinking exercise and had some other opportunities. So, it's just an organization that believes in these ideas, and if our school was interested in being involved in any way, shape, or form, they're an organization that might be a resource for us to provide different opportunities. I know that John Berkey, who's the president of Luda now, and was superintendent at Huntley, went two years ago, so I think they just identified different superintendents from across the country that they think would want to have their system somehow or another, in different ways, possibly be involved in some of their programming, so...
Next, Freedom of Information Act requests.
Yeah, they must have known Ellen was on vacation, we only have two this time. One requesting specific emails, which was partially granted and partially denied, one requesting certain meeting minutes, which was granted.
Okay, any board communications? Okay, we have three upcoming meetings on the agenda. Wednesday, August 8th, there will be a special Board of Education meeting here at 6:00. Tuesday, August 14th, is our regular scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30, and Tuesday, August 28th, is also our regular education, our Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here at District 205 Center. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.